Hey, the meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you, and I'll call the meeting to order. This is the October 26, 2021, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. Missing tonight is regular Commissioner Corcoran, and sitting in his place will be Commissioner Gordon. Commissioner Gordon, are you?
I don't see her here yet.
Then preparation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, well, we wait for one more. As you know, we've been, the department has been through some retirements and restructuring. And as a result of that, we are now fully staffed. We've come out the other side, and I'm pleased to report that we are now fully staffed up. Josephine Keo, who is on your screen, you can wave, Josephine. Some of you may recognize her, she's been in our office for many years. She's been the clerk of the zoning board of appeals for more than 15 years. And she has now moved over a chair to occupy the role formerly played by Dolores. And we're happy to have Dolores, or Josephine, take on that new role. We have hired a new clerk of the zoning board of appeals, who has started with us, so we're back to full strength. And we're happy to have Josephine in this new role. So this is her first opportunity to sit in with us, as she's been getting our new ZBA clerk up to speed. So, welcome, Josephine.
Well, that's fantastic, welcome, Josephine. And I hope that everything is going smoothly for you so far.
Excellent, thank you, it was nice to meet you all. I know, now I can put a face for your name.
There you go, that's great. I know, we, I think we've actually spoken over the phone.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Terrific. Well, with that, I'll see if we have Commissioner Gordon yet. We don't have Commissioner Gordon, we don't have Commissioner Elliott. Do we have Commissioner Di Giacomo? I don't see him. All right, and we go, we go forward down one. All right, so the first item on our agenda is bills and communications and meeting minutes. First is October 12, 2021. Motion on that?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Francis, second by Commissioner Breaman. Thank you, any comments or questions, Commissioner Francis?
No.
All good, thank you, Commissioner Breaman? Very good, anybody else? All those in favor say aye or raise your hand, aye? Any opposed? So that minutes are adopted unanimously. Okay, next item on our agenda is old business. That is 1073 North Benson Road. It's a special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to new townhouses for 84 additional beds in double A zone.
We're joined now by Commissioner Di Giacomo, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Di Giacomo, you are, you were at the last meeting, I know, and you are sitting in for Commissioner Corcoran, who will be absent all evening.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record. Fairfield University seeks a special exception approval to add two new townhouse buildings to their existing north townhouse complex. A total of 84 beds are proposed to be added to the existing 540-bed complex. Proposed building number 16 will have nine units and 58 beds, and there will be three stories and 37 feet in height. Proposed building 17 will have five units and 26 beds, will be two stories and 22 feet in height. A minor reconfiguration of the internal roadway is proposed, as well as the addition of 43 additional parking spaces. The relevant standard considerations for a special exception are as follows. Number one is the location type, character, and size, the use of the buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town or neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property. Number two is the nature and location of the buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic, with provisions made for entering and leaving the property without creating a new hazard or traffic congestion. Four is the proposed use and compliance with the plan of conservation and development. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman, subject to any questions.
All right, excellent, thank you very much. So, I just saw that, or I'm recalling that Commissioner Braun from the, from the, actually, the agenda. Commissioner Braun was not at last meeting. Commissioner Braun, did you watch the tapes or no?
No, I haven't had a chance.
Okay, so Commissioner Braun will sit out of this item, okay? We don't have another alternate to sit in for her presently. Okay? And so, can I have a motion on this item, so that we can pick this up? Yep, Commissioner Francis?
To approve.
Okay, motion to approve, Commissioner Francis, second by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you. Okay? Mr. Francis, you want to get us started? Yeah, I can't hear you.
It complies with our regulations for orderly development, our safety regulations, no increased traffic, and conforms to our P O C D. It will help the university, which is a great asset to our community. So I support this project proposal.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate that. Commissioner Noonan?
I agree, that was a good application, meets the criteria for special exception, and would support the application.
Very good, thank you.
Take it.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on this? So I agree, you know, it is, we, one of the things that I'm, you know, where I think, and we're all looking out for is the, you know, the growth aspect of this. And, you know, Fairfield University has tried to add beds on, on their campus to bring some students away from the beach. You know, this is incremental. It's a, it's a, it's an excellent use of the space, and they're, you know, improving the campus. And as Commissioner Francis noted, that is, you know, excellent for the town. It is truly an asset to the town, which we should all, should all support. And complies with our regulations and our special exception. Commissioner Breaman?
I agree, I also think it's thoughtful how the university's applications give a sense of the long-term planning, as well as the short-term, as you said, incremental approach to adding beds. I think that's helpful for the zoning commission to have the big picture, and you also see the trees as well as the forest.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments or questions? Mr. Went, were there any conditions that we need to? I don't recall any from hearing, I don't have any, see anything highlighted here in my notes, but...
No, I don't have any to recommend, other than the standard condition for any special exception or similar permit, where there'd be a bond posted by the university. But other than that, I don't have any other specific conditions.
All right, well, that's standard, so. Motion on the table is to approve. All those in favor say aye or raise your hand, aye? Any opposed? So that motion to approve is adopted unanimously, and we have one. I guess she's recused, Commissioner Braun recused herself from, from the matter.
Yeah, there'd be a six to zero vote.
Right. Next item is our public hearing. We have technically three matters, two of which are related, so two matters on the docket. For those members of the public that have come for the public hearing, our first item is the 750 Post Road, 42 Elliott Street Chick-fil-A application, in which we are at the rebuttal, the applicant's rebuttal portion of the hearing. There is not opportunity for further public comment, as disclosed at the last, the last hearing, last meeting. Once the applicant closes on that application, we will go to our second matter, which is 40 Hillside Road, zone change application, as well as a special permit application for the construction of a veterinary hospital. Once the applicant goes forward with their application and presentation, the members of the public will be heard on those items. And at the conclusion of everyone's comments, the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal. And then when the applicant is finished with their rebuttal, the public hearing will be closed on those items, and the public hearing will be closed on that as well. All right, so hopefully we can get through all this. We do have a regular curfew at 10:00 PM, which we will abide by. And if we're not concluded with the Hillside Road applications by then, they'll be continued until our next regular public hearing. Okay, so with that, I'll call item number one, 750 Post Road, 42 Elliott Street, special permit and coastal site plan application of 750 Post Road Associates LLC, pertaining to the construction of a new restaurant in the design commercial district. Attorney Nuff, you, on to your rebuttal. Commissioner Levy, you are recused from this matter, got it? Attorney Green, I see your hand raised. You're on mute, sir. Attorney Green, you're on mute.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Joel Green, Mr. Chairman, I had submitted a letter to the commission this afternoon to the effect of, that I had received a memo from the applicant yesterday that included some new material. And I had written to the commission late this afternoon. And it is my position that there is new analysis in the, in the material that was submitted yesterday, and if the applicant is claiming it, it seems to me that the public should have an opportunity to address that new information only.
Okay, so I have not seen that, I don't believe. Mr. Went, was there a further submission by Attorney Green? Please, if you're not speaking, other members of the public, please mute your line. Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Mr. Went? Was there a further submission by Attorney Green this afternoon?
I am endeavoring to check my email, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, I do, I do see a letter in my inbox from Mr. Green, it came after I left the office.
Yeah, okay, all right, what time?
4:53.
All right, so approximately two hours ago. So Attorney Green, obviously, I and no other members of the commission have had the opportunity to see your submission. I reviewed Attorney Nuff's submission. To be very candid, I did not see anything that jumped out at me as new material that was not submitted for the purposes of express rebuttal, of any comments or arguments that you or any other member of the public made during the earlier public hearing. Could you give me an example of something that you think is new material not presented in rebuttal to your arguments?
There's new analysis of new, further optimization and a new analysis of the signal at the intersection of Post Road and Route 135. And in response to that, our traffic consultant prepared a very short letter that responds to that. I don't necessarily need to address the commission, but we claim it as new material, and we claim our response.
So you, are you asking me for the, for the opportunity to simply note the materials as a part of the record and have them considered by the commission? In, in the file? Enough, I haven't, that's fine, Attorney Nuff, I haven't even seen them, do you have any objection to that?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, because really it's just sort of calling out a few numbers from the report that we submitted yesterday, so I'm not going to object.
Great, no objection. And having none, Attorney Green, we will accept the materials you submitted into the record, and the commission will consider them in, in the matter.
Thank you, and I just, so the record's clear, I also referenced some acclaim made regarding the actions of the police commission at a meeting recently. I know Attorney Nuff has seen that, and if he has no objection, it's all part of the letter.
Well, if it's part of the letter, then it just said that it's being received into the record, and that we will consider that when, when we get it as in our distribution, and so. Very well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Attorney Nuff, without further ado.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Nuff, 147 Broad Street, in Milford, Connecticut, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, 750 Post Road Associates. As you know, Mr. Chairman, this is our opportunity to respond to the claims made by Attorney Green, and he is the consultant, Mr. Monteleone. And we provided a memo, and a lot of yesterday, it was my memo to the commission, and a letter from our professional engineer, Rob Altamaitis, which we've noted for the record. We'll get into the specifics of everything that the opposition has raised, particularly traffic. But, you know, before we do so, you know, as I also put in my memo, I just think some context is required. The commission should know that a tremendous amount of care and thought went into this application by a, by a very experienced and skilled team. From the property owners to the engineering team, as well as Chick-fil-A. Before submitting the application, the team worked on literally every facet of the site plan for months, for months, to ensure that not only did it meet or exceed every requirement of your regulations, but also that we could come before you and assure you that the site and the roadway network can easily accommodate this specific restaurant use. As you know, zoning regulates the use and not the user. Nonetheless, we wanted to make clear for the commission that not only who our tenant was, because we're really excited about Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is a notoriously wonderful corporate client, who's going to do wonders for this site if this, this project is approved. So we wanted to tell the commission about that, we didn't hide behind anything. We wanted to tell you that Chick-fil-A, and also to make every accommodation possible to the site and to the traffic to accommodate Chick-fil-A's traffic and queuing, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But beyond just the nuts and bolts of parking and all that, we also were cognizant that this is a really important location to town. We're on Post Road, we're close to Fairfield Center, proximity to Old Post Road, the beach, I-95, and nearby neighborhoods. So not only did you want a fully functional site, but you also wanted a really attractive one, with a really quality tenant. And that's what Chick-fil-A is. While we all want to see this portion of Post Road brought fully back to life, despite the significant challenges that there's facing, new retail, new restaurants. And we know that you do too, because, you know, we listened with interest to your deliberations regarding a relatively small application across the street from Pizza Co. But the commission spent frankly hours listening and delivering on that application, because you knew that that was a long vacant site, and had the opportunity to really enhance that neighborhood. Well, the same goes here, but even more so. So, we are proud of this application, we worked really hard on this application. There's literally no provision in your regulations that we didn't review down to the last detail, to make sure that we comply, including whether a canopy can extend two feet into the setback or not. There's nothing that we didn't think of, that we didn't try to devote the right amount of space toward, and the right amount of traffic engineering toward. And so, that's why we had devoted the entire large, almost two-acre parcel to Chick-fil-A, even though another drive-through, another retail use could easily fit onto that property under your regulations. That's why we brought on the best possible traffic engineer. Someone with years of experience, not only studying traffic and how to mitigate it, but someone who has, that has actual hands-on experience designing and operating traffic signal networks, and not someone sitting in an ivory tower like many traffic engineers or traffic planners. We brought to your attention the very first night of the hearing. Chick-fil-A's experience on other locations, how they have responded positively in those locations, but more importantly, how we worked to ensure site that none of those issues could occur here, even at the busiest times. We made sure that DOT accepted our backdrop traffic counts before becoming before. We counted traffic at two other Chick-fil-A's on a total of 12 times, and used that data in the most conservative fashion. We proposed a very attractive, all brick building with no stucco, I would note. Our next-door neighbor, Fairfield Center, supports this application because a vacant site does no one any good. We have indicated in our traffic counts that traffic will be going through their site to their lights. They have no objection, they welcome it, because having a vacant site next door is no good for them, and frankly, no good for the community. And most importantly, my clients uncovered a really wonderful opportunity in really difficult times, hidden in a less-than-optimal state, to make the site productive again. Bring it, put it back on the tax rolls, bring a really wonderful restaurateur. You know, you know, if you talk to anyone where Chick-fil-A's are located, they rave about the owner of the property, and they're involvement in the community. And that will be the case here. So that's also why when frankly Attorney Green blinding makes patently faceless claims, versus that somehow brick is actually stucco, it is more than disconcerting. It is simply unacceptable. And the process and this commission deserve better. And by the way, don't you think that your very capable staff, if we are so wildly out of compliance with your regulations, would have told us, or you, that we're out of compliance on any of these issues? So whether Attorney Green's claim is that somehow a canopy isn't a canopy, or that our traffic cannot be accommodated, those claims are all of the same cloth, and they should all be rejected. You know, it's interesting, because their traffic analysis really is one visit by Mr. Monteleone to Norwalk on one Friday evening, where his counts are exactly the same as ours, and one visit by Attorney Green to Brookfield. That's it, that's their data, that's their research, that's their analysis. Everything else is questioning what we presented. That's not traffic engineering, and this commission ought not to base this decision on so flimsy a record as what Attorney Green has presented for you. So let me turn to my memo that I submitted yesterday, and I'll try not to be redundant. But again, it is important for the commission to understand the context. And I note that we have been fully transparent throughout this process. Not only who the applicant is, who the members of the LLC are, but also who our, who our tenant is. And our desire to be forthcoming is in stark contrast to the opposition's. We have a really good idea of it, and maybe why they're still hiding behind, you know, the cloak of Attorney Green. But we have not done so, we have revealed to you who our tenant is and who our members are. Our design and our analyses are characterized by our conservative approach. As I noted, we could accommodate another restaurant or retailer on the site, and we have not, we have not done so, because we wanted to devote the entirety of that area to adding surplus parking and additional queuing space. We have far exceeded the requirements of your stormwater requirements. And all of our traffic analyses utilize uniformly conservative assumptions. All the comparisons you've heard to other Chick-fil-A's are literally not. All the other locations that you've heard about are either smaller, have less parking, have less queuing, have single lane queuing, or they, or they share their access with other retailers. Even though the proposed queue area on our site of 36 cars is equal to the maximum observed at other locations by either our engineer or the, or the opposition's consultants, there's even additional queue space available on-site with no impact on required parking, no impact on internal circulation, and most importantly, no impact of any kind on the adjacent streets. And there's no evidence of any kind to suggest that there will be any queuing of our traffic onto adjacent streets. It can all be maintained on our property.
If I could just ask you a question there, because I do think that this is one of the more critical aspects of the concern, right? It's not just about delay at the intersections and what have you, but about the, the, the ability of the tenant to control the traffic on the site and the queuing and, and all of that. And one of the things that, you know, you presented was a plan that accounted for queuing as overflow from the drive-through area into the parking lot, which would block, otherwise block spaces, right? And so one of the, I think, contentions in opposition is that, you know, by hindering the parking spaces on, on the, on the site, you know, that, that that's going to create its own problems of, of traffic, and, and so forth. I think at one point, you suggested that the applicant would have people out in the parking lot to, you know, direct people. How, at what point does the applicant, the tenant, have an obligation to get out in the parking lot and direct traffic and mitigate the queuing, or even turn people away? Does the applicant agree that as soon as there are cars that exceed the amount available in the queuing, that instead of backing them up, you know, the restaurant will say, either you have to park and go in to get your food, or, we're sorry, but we're at capacity right now? How, how does the applicant, how do you, how do you respond to, to that?
A couple of different things, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the question. First of all, just to let you remind you that the longest queue that anyone has identified is 36 cars at Norwalk. That is, that is the amount of queuing space that we have. We can extend that queue and additional eight cars within the parking field, and then you get to that cross-access drive. And then there's additional area. And what we have indicated is that, by the way, we are overparked by 23 spaces. So that to the extent that any spaces are blocked, the testimony from Chick-fil-A Development Manager, Clint Mattson, who's also on his call, has been, employees will be directed to park in those spaces adjacent to the drive-through, and so that no one is in any way impaired or blocked by their ability to get in or out of those spaces.
Except perhaps the employees, so, so that is, that is something that the applicant here would, would accept as a condition of approval?
Absolutely.
Okay, keep going.
So in addition to that, Chick-fil-A is expert at managing their sites. As, as much as this commission, and to their credit, has a desire to manage this property and manage the traffic on it, Chick-fil-A has an equal or greater desire to do so. So if we can do 36 cars, plus another eight to 44, plus another few on the other side of the access drive, I mean, we are far beyond any number of cars that anyone has noticed at any other location.
Is it beyond the capacity to service those cars, would you turn cars away?
I don't believe that they will turn cars away, and I don't believe that's necessary to turn cars away. I think human nature being what it is, is that if people see a long drive-through lane or line, they, they will park their cars and go inside. I think some of the, some of the queues that people have experienced is frankly due to COVID, and, and restaurant, restaurant dining rooms being closed. But those are reopening, including Chick-fil-A dining rooms are reopening. So I don't think that that would be a likely scenario, I think it's exceedingly remote. So I don't know how you could condition that. But I mean, we're confident that our sites can, can absorb all the traffic, all the drive-through traffic, and in no way bleed out onto the roads.
Well, I, I, I could suggest one way to condition that circumstance. And it would be an express prohibition on the tenant stacking cars in the drive-through any further than the drive-through. And, and an express condition of approval prohibition on stacking cars beyond that point, such that an employee might have to go out and say, I'm sorry, but we are at capacity at the drive-through. You will either have to park and go in, or we're at capacity.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I think the other alternative is what you gave me, because Chick-fil-A will Uh I understand that, Mr. Chairman. I think the other alternative is when you, because Chick-fil-A will have someone. At that particular location on those very rare occasions, should they exceed that extra queuing space. Um I mean, certainly, I don't think there's any objection to going beyond the thirty-six cars into the parking field where they're not affecting any customers. Um only employees, that even if they had to go further than that, again, there would be a Chick-fil-A employee there helping to manage that traffic. But again, no required parking is going to be affected because we are over parked by twenty-three spaces.
Right, that's, that is for encumbering the parking spaces. If you're entering off Elliott Street, it's encumbering the parking spaces to the right. On the way to the drive-through, right? And if all of those spaces are encumbered, you still have. Uh the minimum number of spaces that are required for the development, yes?
We are over parked by twenty-three spaces, no question.
Alright, um alright, you know, I'm 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 getting it out here for discussion, right? Because it's, this is of paramount concern. Um yeah.
I would tell you, there's nothing worse for a applicant than a quiet commission who has concerns and don't voice them. So I I am grateful of, you know, for your concern and your questions and any other commission member's thoughts.
Commissioner Noonan.
Thank you. Um turning off. You had mentioned, uh I think we might have discussed this already, but you mentioned again, no other. Site has shown thirty-six, more than a thirty-six car queue. We also though, I think you've said this capacity, this kitchen is much bigger. It's going to be more efficient. It's going to be. Um making more meals. Why should I not be thinking that this is now going to generate more than thirty-six just because it's a bigger restaurant?
Well, I I don't, I don't think the increased capacity drives the demand. I think the demand is the demand. And the question is how we respond to that demand. But merely because we can serve meals faster doesn't mean. John Nuff or Tom Noonan is going to go, is going to go get a chicken sandwich when they otherwise might. I just don't think that's the case. I think it's just a matter of more efficiently responding to the customers who are already there. I don't think it's going to increase demand.
Well, I don't, I mean, it's hard to say because who's to say that the thirty-six car queue in Norwalk is limited to that because. That's just the regular demand or people are turned away because they see, as you said, thirty-six car queue and they walk, they go somewhere else. So now we have more capacity on Fairfield, which may generate just as much traffic, more traffic. Because people know that they can be accommodated.
Well, I I would tell you, Mr. Noonan, there's literally nothing in the record to support that.
Let me ask you this.
We're engaging speculation. We have.
I'm not so sure that's true. Let me ask you this. I had asked for the IT from the Norwalk uh facility and I believe that's been put in the record. And I think the trip counts and correct, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think the uh the Attorney Green's expert said would confirm this, but we didn't have the numbers at the time. But that the IT trip count generation for Norwalk compared to the actual trip count, the actual trip count was greater.
No, no, so 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 uh I just want to make sure we're using our nomenclature properly. So so IT has its, you know, required numbers or suggested numbers for a drive-through restaurant. And how many cars it will generates. And the first night of the hearing, there was a question, well, we think. A Chick-fil-A would generate more cars than IT would predict. And so we we were happy to go count and we did, both in Norwalk and Wallingford, those actual cars. And we actually did those counts, as I said, on a number of occasions, a total of twelve times at those two locations on Fridays and on weekends. So those numbers were indeed higher than IT and we provided you with all that data and we.
Agreed.
Very, very close, you know, very carefully, how we compile that data to come up with the with the. Best possible uh information for the commission to make their decision.
Exa- I'm, I'm, we appreciate that. I mean, the opposition was probably going to do the same as well, but again, the actual trip counts. Exceeded the IT counts.
Right, we're we're basing our complete traffic analysis on those other counts, on those real world counts. Attorney Green said to us, well, you know, they're they're not telling us everything in terms of what their customer basis. We couldn't do any better than what we've done, which is to count, you know, the two close proximity Chick-fil-A's. What better than close, you know, relevant, the same restaurants in terms of creating a. A baseline for what the the traffic is, you know.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
We've been, we've been claiming that, you know, the reliance on Norwalk is really apples and oranges and it is in terms of the site itself. But we're happy to accept the the traffic count data and we provided that to you.
Okay, so maybe I'm misunderstanding something. I had thought that your traffic um, your traffic uh reports. Relied upon IT data, not the actual trip counts from Norwalk.
The initial, yes, the initial traffic report did utilize IT. After the first night, it was requested that we actually do counts at Norwalk and we did that. And Rob Walter-Mittas' traffic supplements, which amended his initial traffic reports, included all the data. From the Norwalk counts as well as the Wallingford counts. Those took place in August. And then we told you in that supplement, which is dated September seventh, that typically at Chick-fil-A's, the August traffic is about twenty percent higher. And so then we went back out in September and recounted two more weekends at both locations. And and the traffic was less, not twenty percent less, I think anywhere between five and fifteen percent less. It was less, but we didn't take any credit for that. So we gave you the worst case scenario. We revised our traffic study on the basis of the actual counts at Norwalk and in Wallingford. That's what our entire traffic analysis is based upon. We have thrown out the IT numbers. We're not relying upon them. We are throwing them out. We're giving you real world data and basing our, all of our information on that real world data.
Okay, and I was mistaken. Thank you.
Okay, I'm really glad we got that up. So, you know, if I if I can just continue, you know, as I said, you know.
Attorney Nuff.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Were they the counts until seven PM?
Right, so so that's a really good example. Thanks for bringing that up because I was going to get to that anyway. That's an example of candidly, Mr. Monteleone's unfamiliarity or lack of experience of doing work in Connecticut. Because what Connecticut requires is that you, is that you analyze traffic during the peak hour. There are several peak hours. Obviously, there's a Saturday peak hour, there's, there's the weekday peak hour. The weekday peak hour is four to six. So he suggested, well, you ought to do counts during lunchtime and you ought to do counts from six to seven. Well, yeah, we could do that, but that wouldn't tell you anything because it's not as conservative as what we've done. Because there are fewer cars on the road at lunchtime and there are fewer cars on the road between six and seven. And we have detailed that very carefully in Rob Walter-Mittas' most recent reply to Mr. Monteleone. We gave you the actual counts driving by this site at noon and at six to seven. It is less than at the peak hour. So if you want a conservative analysis. And you want to be as careful as possible in making your decision, those are immaterial. Yes, so, you know, Chick-fil-A may be somewhat busier at from six to seven. Well, guess what? The roads are a lot quieter. If you're doing a traffic analysis, you know, um you want to understand the peak hour. If we had used the six to seven time period, I have no question that Attorney Green would be saying, well, gee, there's fewer cars on the road. Because no matter what we say, there's always a counter. I'm telling you, we have taken the most conservative approach we can. Real world data at the worst possible time, including Saturdays.
I appreciate that. I think, I think we can, we can move on with your. Thank you.
I might try to, you know, we've gotten a lot out, so here's, here's the most important thing. It's something that's absolutely unrefuted by Attorney Green or Mr. Monteleone in any of their reports. In any of their testimony, including the submission they made late today. The cumulative delays experienced by all drivers through the intersection will be reduced. Can't say that enough. The cumulative delays of all the different movements, of all the drivers through that intersection. Based upon our actual traffic counts, adding all the Chick-fil-A traffic to that intersection will be less than it is today. That signal does not operate efficiently. It will operate better as recognized by the police commission. And and the police commission minutes, which Attorney Green submitted, they they stand for what they stand for. We have taken no issue with how they're drafted. They supported, not this application specifically, because, you know, whether or not this application gets approved is up to you. But what they did vote is they supported our application to the DOT to re-time the signal. To revise the timing of their signal.
Right, I think the distinction here, and I I I thank you, Mr. Wen, for circulating the the documents, but I think the distinction here is that. The Fairfield Police Commission did not endorse the uh timing uh 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 data or detail. They um supported the applicant in petitioning DOT to review. The changes, correct?
Uh I I think that's, no, uh.
Is it semantics?
I I think it's a little bit semantic, yes. I mean, they were supportive of the application to revise the signal timing to make. The overall signal more efficient.
Alright, so it's your, it's your position that if they could do it themselves, they would have, but needed DOT approval.
Right, I I don't want, I don't want to quibble with what the police commission said. Um we're happy to rely on the minutes as as they've been submitted.
Fine, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. So I I just want to say that one more. The overall delay that people experience traveling through that intersection will be reduced. And there was nothing in the record that counters that. And that was, that was the resubmission by Rob Bautramas on September seventh. As further, you know, enhanced or numbed um in the submission of October twentieth. So I just want to quickly go through some of the, um I called them preposterous last time, um call them baseless this time. You know, Attorney Green at one point said we have, we have not provided user-specific data. I've just gone on maybe far longer than you want, that we indeed have provided user-specific data at two locations on 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 twelve different occasions. He kept trying to claim that uh because we have a door that can also operate as a window that is not permitted. What the zone, what the Fairfield zoning regulations say is that a drive-through restaurant is permitted use. And then there's a comma provided there was stacking of a hundred fifty feet before the window. In no way can anyone twist that to to say that a window is mandated and a door is not. Indeed, I think if we had a window, uh Attorney Green would be saying, well, you ought to have a door because you're going to have too many cars. So I don't think that this argument candidly fa- uh passes the straight face test.
Turn enough.
Yes.
I mean, he brought up, I'll give Attorney Green credit, he brought up an interesting point that I hadn't thought of though. You know, he suspect, he surmised, I think is a fair word, that the window was intentionally used. Not just because it's traditional, but a window keeps the employee in the building. And you would now have a door that you're going to have employees going out into. Not just one lane, but two lanes of queuing that will have, be serving potentially eight cars in a minute. So. I think his point is well taken that, you know, while window, I see your point though, it doesn't expressly say a drive-through has to have a window. I get that, but it does say window, not door. It does strike me as a safety concern, not just because you need, simply because you need. Two lanes of traffic in order to accommodate your queue.
We'd be happy to walk you through how the safety provisions, there are striped areas. Obviously, Chick-fil-A has a considerable. A considerable amount of experience. Our employees are trained to do that. But to say that merely because in the provision that goes to how many cars. You know, can be stacked or the distance of queuing that must be provided and there's a reference to a window. In regulations that were drafted probably. Maybe in the fifties or sixties when drive-through windows became relevant.
Conceded.
There was just no way. I'm I'm sorry. I I'm, there's no way I can concede any validity that I, for that argument. That we have, that we cannot have a door and must have a window based upon that language.
Okay. But what is your safety, let's go through your safety.
That's fine.
Provisions that you said. I mean, a lot of streets have striped and there's still people who get into, you know, collisions. So what, what is it that you have for safety for uh in that queuing?
Alright, so um I'm going to ask Matt Bruton, who's a professional engineer, if he can. If he can, you know, it might take him a minute, but he can call up that plan and we can zoom in on that area. And I would, I, and Clint, as I mentioned, Clint Mattson from Chick-fil-A is also here. And we greatly appreciate the commission's concern about Chick-fil-A employee safety. Again, I would argue that Chick-fil-A has equal or greater concern about um their employee's safety. So, Matt, can you?
Truly not. When I was saying conceded, I was not asking you to concede anything. I was conceding that these provisions, these regulations were drafted. You know, years and years ago.
Yeah, thank you. I I appreciate that. I understand. How you doing with the uh?
We can see it. Can you not see it, Attorney Nuff?
No, 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 we can't, but I don't know that that's the best plan because that's really just showing the materials. I mean, really, we really want the detailed plan that shows the the sort of the crosswalk at, you know, outside the door of the. Of the uh the drive-through area. I can't see uh Matt Bruton uh physically scrolling through his uh CAD files to find the plan. Okay, so, you know, um while, Matt, is there, is there not another plan, but, you know, while, while messing? I just wanted to remind that, you know, the the folks at Chick-fil-A who are actually delivering to the vehicles. Are specifically trained to do so. Um when they arrive in the morning, they know what it is that they're doing. It's not as if you arrive in the morning and you don't know whether you're filling the drinks or cooking chicken or directing traffic. They are, or delivering food to people. These, these are people who have been specifically trained um in safety protocol. So that they can deliver the food in a safe and efficient manner. So um, you know, Clint, if you want to add to that, you know, you know, please, yes, I I don't know whether. We can find a plan or Matt has a plan available to him that shows in in as much detail as we might like. You know, the crosswalk area where the food delivery takes place.
Yeah, good evening. This is Clint Mattson with Chick-fil-A. How's everyone tonight? Thank you, John, for um letting me go and speak on this. So to to add on to what John is saying, our team members are specifically trained to work in our drive-through. Um and they go through specific training before they even go out to the drive-through to be able to.
I'm sorry, um, turning off, we just lost.
Yeah, I think we just lost, uh I think, I think, I think it's just Matt is just trying to find a a better plan, frankly.
Oh, alright, sorry. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, Clint, we can still hear you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um and our drive-throughs are set up with with striping in the drive-through. As soon as you exit the door out into the drive-through, there is a two-foot space for our team members to walk out. To safely see the cars before they cross any cars or deliver any food. There is a crosswalk that they cross um in front of cars to the next lane to deliver food um to multiple cars. Keep in mind, um people are driving to the drive-through. Keep in mind, um, people are driving to the drive-through at very low speeds. They are not at high speeds at all. Um, they are able to monitor the cars as they come through before they deliver food to any cars. Um, so we take safety as a top of mind um for our team members and of our guests that come through our drive-through. So no one is um hurt at all. We've um employed this at multiple restaurants across the country. Uh, we have over twenty-seven-hundred restaurants. Half of them probably use two lanes in their drive-through. Um, and as our new design in order to go out and deliver food um to our guests.
Okay, is is um, does that, does that answer the question? We're happy to answer any follow-ups.
I mean, it it's it does provide us with the basic rules of engagement for your servers to, you know, get out into the uh into the queue lines. Um, you know, I think you also mentioned that this queue line is larger than most, if not the largest. Um, I'm curious about how this sort of fits in to the to the body of experience that Chick-fil-A has with servicing these kinds of um drive-throughs where you have two lanes and servers kind of running out with the food to deliver to the cars. Whether the queue line here of thirty-six is short, long, intermediate, the longest, whatever. And then do you have a history of um, you know, incidents? Uh, uh, are there, are to 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 have people gotten hurt? Um, and if so, what is the rate of injury and 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 the like? I mean, I think those are irrelevant questions um that you might have answers to.
Yeah, I can definitely answer both of those questions. So this drive-through is definitely on the longer side of our design um for our stores. Um, so in the past, for like Norwalk and other stores around the area, they were designed for eighteen to twenty cars, twenty-two cars in this um queue at one time. Um, this was designed um knowing some of our success in the area, um and our guests that come to the restaurant that we needed a bigger queue. So this is on the very large side of all of our design um restaurants for the drive-through. And from an incident rate on our um accidents in our drive-through, um, I've been with Chick-fil-A for over four years and I have not heard of one accident um from our operators in the drive-through. I'm not saying it does not happen, um but I have not heard of anyone getting hurt in our drive-through and hit by any cars.
Okay, what and what is your position again with the Chick Chick-fil-A?
So I'm the principal development lead. I lead all new restaurants in the northeast area, um in several territories in the northeast. So I open all new restaurants in this northeast area.
And do you believe that if there were incidents in the drive-through of the servers, you know, getting knocked around or uh injuries or incidents that, you know, that would be brought to your attention so that you could adjust the strategy or not?
It it would, absolutely. We have multiple people, not just myself, that design restaurants and analyze our drive-throughs at all times. It would definitely be brought to our attention so we can take precautions to uh modify our drive-through to make it safer. We believe this is the safest drive-through we have.
When you say this is the safest, what what are you referring to?
Just the 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 precautions that we've taken um in our drive-through. We have our s- um striping in the drive-through, two-foot barriers between cars, between them and the building. We have multiple signage in our drive-through that allows um or lets our customers know that will be people in the drive-through delivering food.
Very good.
Okay, and and I think Matt was trying to give you a little better indication of um what that area is like with the window and the um, you can't really see the sidewalk, but I think, you know, Clint has adequately described the the care with which um, you know, the employees will be delivering.
So so, right, and go back to the to the perspective on the right side of the screen. Um, which you're calling up right now. Yeah, just move that across here right there. That's good. You can even blow that up a little bit. Um, so as I understand what you're saying, then there is that cross, that's good, there is that crosswalk. The servers come out of the door on the right-hand side of that visual and they walk perpendicular into the crosswalk, which is in between the two lanes of cars, that black bashed area. Yeah.
That's correct. They will. I apologize. Go ahead.
Yep, that's you're you're following it with your cursor right now. Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll walk out of the the door. They'll either walk parallel to this door along the um back of the store to the first lane of the drive-through. Or they will cross the crosswalk like you was talking about and showing and walk down the two-foot center aisle, which is um striped in the middle right there to deliver cars to the outside lane.
Right, to get to the driver's side door on the on the outside.
Correct.
So they're not just walking out into the field and and right, they're they're going perpendicular to the door and then down the center lane into which, you know, where 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 the cars are are not crossing the line.
Correct.
Are they serving cars closest to the building in the driver's side or from the passenger's side?
They're delivering food to all cars on the uh driver's side of the window.
So then if it's.
They walk parallel down next to the building. They will deliver to the driver's side. And as they cross the crosswalk and walk down the center aisle, it'll be to the driver's side of the outside lane also.
And I s- the uh, when they're going to the second lane, they're always on the crosswalk area. They're not cutting across.
That is correct. And we definitely uh keep safety top of mind. All of our, like I said, all of our team members are trained. They all wear safety gear um to be outside um with the vehicles.
What kind of safety gear are they wearing?
Um, so they're wearing safety vests, reflective safety vests as they walk out um at all times. If they're in the drive-through, they have their vests on.
I see, so not um like pads or anything like that. It's it's a visual identifier.
That is correct.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Anybody else have any other questions for this? You can stop screen sharing now. So that I can see faces. Does anybody else have any other questions before we move on? Commissioner Ron?
Um, I think I asked this before, but I don't remember what the answer was or if it was answered. Um, what's the average idle time of the vehicles? I've read articles, people have submitted in their letters links to various articles. I've read that Chick-fil-A has like the longest wait time of most fast food because there aren't enough Chick-fil-A's to satisfy demand, I guess. And it's like fifteen minutes. Um, if you have thirty-six cars queued up and some of your data for Norwalk supports that, it could be as high as that or higher. How long are those cars waiting?
The the answer to that question, it it is very hard to answer that question. Um, it could anywhere be from five minutes to ten to fifteen minutes. It really depends on the various um things that are going going on in the drive-through. Uh, so there could be one person that ordered a large meal that they need to accommodate and that takes a little bit longer. Um, or it could be no one, everyone is just getting their meals um very efficiently and it takes very no time to go through the drive-through. So it that varies. Um, it could be anywhere from um five to seven minutes to probably twelve to fifteen minutes, depending on what's going on in the drive-through at time and what people are ordering.
And that the the car, I'm still looking at all your data about the turn, so the the turns onto the post road could be anywhere from a hundred to two hundred vehicles an hour. Um, leaving the site during peak hours, you know, morning, evening or Saturday. I was just looking at the data. And most of those would be turning right onto the post road in front of where sunny days is like towards Benson, North Benson.
Uh, I think we want to have Rob Bautramas respond to that.
I'll do it this way. No, I'm signed in, but now I am doing it just.
On top of that, M line? Thank you.
There's Rob.
Okay, uh first, I'll check my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, for your record, Rob Bautramas. Um, so now what we project exiting the site driveway onto Post Road during the peak times is um seventy-three and seventy-nine total vehicles. That's for the PM and Saturday peak hours.
But the, so the total vehicles leaving the site are like in the hundreds though, right? But you're saying only that many will take a right on the Post Road from the drive-through?
Correct.
And the rest are gonna wend their way through the parking lot and go out on Elliot Place or somewhere?
Correct. So exiting the site, let's take the worst-case scenario. That's a Saturday. There's seventy-nine taking a right out onto the Post Road. There's forty that are taking a right out of our site driveway onto Elliot Place, most likely going to Fairfield Center to that traffic light. There's forty taking a left onto Elliot Place, eventually making their way to Elliot Street, where some will take a left turn on Route one thirty-five. Uh, but the majority take a right turn onto Route one thirty-five.
Okay, but the total people leaving the site, I can't find the data right at the moment.
Well, I I could add it up for you.
It's the hundred, oh, here it is, two. People leaving the drive-through, total leaving the site. Uh, there's so many data points here. It could be in the hundreds, right?
No, no, there's a, there's a lot of information. The total leaving our site in a peak hour, in the worst-case peak hour is the Saturday midday. And that's a total leaving the site about a hundred and sixty-nine vehicles.
Okay, I'm looking at something that says three hundred thirty-three, so and there's so many.
So, no, no, the three, so the three hundred and thirty-three, Commissioner, that is the average of what we counted in August at the Norwalk and Wallingford locations, but that is the total traffic. So that's the entering trips and exiting trips. So there's not three hundred and thirty, they're essentially split, if you will. Um, it's not exactly fifty-fifty, but the three thirty-three is that real-world number as um.
Okay.
I apologize, my my camera was off and uh, I will turn it on. There I am. Uh, so the three thirty-three represents the total traffic to and from the site. It's not three hundred and thirty-three exiting, it's three hundred and thirty-three entering. It's it's essentially split, if you will.
It's entering and let's be cl- let's be really clear, Rob. The three thirty-three is the total of those entering and leaving. So every car counts twice, an entrance and an exit. So whatever those numbers are, you divide it in half and get the actual number of vehicles visiting the site.
Correct. It's it's essentially in half. It's not exactly a fifty-fifty split of entering and exiting, but for all intents and purposes, yes.
Right.
So it would be in the hundreds entering and in the hundreds exiting, say, you know, um Saturday midday. In the low hundreds.
Total, right. Yes.
Entering and exiting per hour.
Right, okay, right. But but your initial question was regarding the volume turning right onto Post Road. And and the worst-case scenario is a Saturday midday and that's seventy-nine total vehicles exiting right onto Post Road. Or just more, just over one per minute, assuming that it's a uniform arrival pattern.
And 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 Rob, Rob, can you remind me, if it's correct, that that traffic accounts for about six percent of what the traffic is on the road already? I think the Saturday peak hour.
That that's correct. So um the three hundred and thirty-three, if you apply that to the twenty-two hundred or so that's already on Route one, you're right. That's about a six percent increase in in, you know, traffic, um, which is really within a daily fluctuation anyways.
Right, so I I mean, one of the things, listen, we're more than happy to to get into the details because it's important. But nonetheless, you know, as I said in my memo, we we can't lose the forest either. So when you talk about the number of cars coming to the site, you have to put in the context of the number of cars that are on the road. And and as we've indicated, a lot of those cars on the road are stopping by Chick-fil-A because they're already on the road. They're pass-by trips. Even those pass-by trips, we count those very conservatively. DOT allows twenty percent if you're using I T E numbers. I T E actually says fifty percent of people visiting quick-serve restaurants are pass-by trips. We use thirty-three percent to be particularly conservative. And we use thirty-three percent instead of twenty percent because we use real-world numbers for Chick-fil-A. So again, trying to be very conservative, but let's not lose sight of the bigger picture, which is there's a lot of cars on the road. Granted, there are fewer cars on Route one now than there were ten years ago, or twenty years ago, as Rob's report makes very, very clear. But we are, you know, a few drops in the bucket uh in the overall stream of traffic that's passing by our site every day, particularly on Saturdays. So, go ahead.
It could be seventy-nine or it could be closer to a hundred, I suppose, depending on if people that are leaving the drive-through would stick a right on the Post Road or go through the parking lot and then out Elliot and then a left or or right, I guess, on the Post Road farther up. It's hard to predict, I imagine, what people are gonna do. I would think people would take.
No, I I mean, so that's traffic distribution and and Rob or any traffic engineer has to has to account for that. Again, we try to be really conservative in that, so I'm one of the things that Rob had indicated at earlier hearing. We all know, those of us who live in in um Fairfield, we use ninety-five as sort of a um a through route. So you jump on the exit twenty-two and head down to Home Depot and instead driving down Route one, we didn't account for any of those trips. We put all of our trips on the local roadway network, even though we knew that people are going to take ninety-five. Because we wanted to be as conservative as possible in our in our traffic design.
Um, so, yeah, so one concern I had was when you said at one point that eight vehicles you served at the same time and exit, that seems like a lot, um.
I I mean, I mean, keep in mind, you know, this isn't like a train car that that they're all connected. You're gonna make it, you know, as Clint said, the Chick-fil-A employees are gonna make a, you know, carefully deliver the food to the cars in the front of the line. And they are gonna behave like any normal, safe operator will, you know, carefully leave the site. And then the next group will leave, so it's not as if they're leaving en masse, all eight at the same time. They're gonna behave in a reasonable, safe, efficient manner. So it's not as if they're all flooding out at one time. So yes, they can't, so it is possible that all eight will be served, but it's not as if, you know, someone is um firing a starting gun and they're all, you know, taking off or, you know, waving the the green flag to to leave. They're gonna do it the same manner as we all do in any drive-through, whether it's a bank, a restaurant or anywhere else. They're gonna be careful about um all the other surrounding pedestrians and all the other traffic.
How, is there any way to reduce or make make it go faster? I mean, on the one hand, you want it to go faster so you have fewer cars idling for a long period. And then you, on the other hand, if they go, if too many exit at the same time, it creates a worse burden on the Post Road with people taking a right turn at that intersection, I suppose. But, you know, one concern that I mentioned earlier is the idling time and the the pollution it generates. Um, it seems kind of like it's inviting.
I don't think our wait times are any greater than any other quick-serve restaurant and and you don't want to hear this, but, you know, whatever the exhaustion of the cars is, is candidly not in the commission's jurisdiction.
Not sure about that, but I do, I am concerned about creating kind of like a pollution generator with cars to sort of being invited to sit there for ten to fifteen minutes, idling, you know, thirty-six cars for maybe a couple of hours. It seems excessive and I don't know if they, what the solution would be, because if you speed them up by adding maybe more service stations, then you're just gonna have more traffic pouring out faster, I guess, onto the Post Road. So I don't really know the solution. I know there's a law that somebody told me about that you're not allowed to idle your car more than three minutes.
Right, if you, I I mean, yes, there is, there's an idling requirement for three minutes. If you're not moving, it doesn't apply to people in the drive-through. And again, let's let's think about the cars that are idling in the context of that setting. Let's always think of the bigger picture. You have I ninety-five where there are tens of thousands of cars going by a day. There are thousands of cars going by our our site every day, never coming into our sites uh on Post Road and Benson Road. Yes, cars will be idling in our drive-through. You have to view that in the context of the tens of thousands of vehicle trips. They're going right by us literally every day.
Right, except idling apparently causes much more pollution than driving. I I had no idea until I read the state regulation. It could be three or four times more um compounds that go up into the air. I don't know. It just seems to me like there should be a better balance of getting cars in and out faster, but then that. getting cars in and out faster, but then that would create a traffic problem. It seems like it's kind of a magnet for just so much traffic. Being that it's, what, um, three times the size, or I think you said it was three or four, what was, uh, larger than the capacity of Norwalk? I forgot what the dimensions were.
But, but, but the thing, the thing about your concerns, when you talk about the amount of traffic, you have two concerns. One is the traffic on the roads, and one is the traffic on our side, the queuing. And we have demonstrated on both of those issues. And I know, you start thinking it's like, well, traffic is a big issue, and you're trying to figure out how does the drive-through interact with it, with the traffic volumes? Those are discreet questions. We have sufficient queuing under all conditions, worst-case scenario, to satisfy the, the, the number of customers that will be coming to the site. That is fully managed on our site. That's the queuing issue. We also have managed the traffic that's coming to our site very conservatively. We have demonstrated that we will not cause undue traffic congestion because how can you have undue traffic congestion if you are lessening the total delays that people are experiencing at that intersection? It is illogical to draw that conclusion. So, we have demonstrated in both cases, queuing and traffic, that this site can easily accommodate both those issues.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think we need to move on from, from this.
I, I only, I only have two other quick things with regard to, um, Attorney Green's comments last time. Um, actually, maybe three. One is, you know, whether, uh, the canopy can project into the setback. There's no question that, that the canopy in the rear of the site where, uh, they'll be taking orders is indeed a canopy. There's no requirement that be attached to the building. Um, you know, any dictionary definition of a canopy just says it's a roof best supported by a structure. Um, you know, he asked for what the dimensions of those are. He provided those dimensions. And as indicated in my memo, uh, many gas station canopies, which are not attached to a building, do indeed project to feed into the setback. So that's a non-issue. Uh, Attorney Green suggested that we are not in compliance with the P O C D because our building has stucco. There is no stucco. It's all brick. I'm not, we won't get into the fact of whether or not the P O C D can mandate the, uh, materials of our building, because it doesn't matter, because we're not using stucco. We're using entirely brick. And then there's also the question regarding whether the ordering kiosk is assigned. Every fast-food restaurant in Fairfield, and indeed anywhere, has a ordering kiosk with a sign. That includes the McDonald's down the street. It includes the Duchess down the street. So I, I would, I would assume that that is treated as an accessory used to a drive-through restaurant and is not deemed to be signage. So, again, those are all examples. I know we've, you know, frankly, these were helpful mentions. But I wanna make sure we, we addressed everything that Attorney Green mentioned at the last hearing. Um, you know, Rob Altremas, as I noted, is here. Um, one of the things that we wanna make sure that he addressed were the comments, um, from Mr. Monteleone from the last meeting, because, you know, sort of interesting, because in one of his comments, you know, he had indicated that the actual proposed mitigation had not been identified. And then in Rob's, I think, September seventh memo, he said it is. It's in the synchroanalysis. It's right there before you. And it wasn't until then that he found some numbers of certain movements where delays are a little bit longer. And so then that's what informed his testimony last time. And then since then, you know, Rob has, you know, further tweaked the numbers, but, you know, listen, we're happy to get into those details, but if the commission is satisfied with what we know is true and what, uh, Attorney Green and Mr. Monteleone have not refuted, that the overall traffic will be less delayed through the intersection, we can leave it at that. If you want a further deep dive into traffic that DOT has approved our numbers, that, you know, we are providing, you know, safe and efficient mitigation, you know, we can do that. I just don't know what the, um, the commission's appetite is for, you know, rock with a better word for, you know, getting deeper into the traffic discussion.
So you should create with whatever record you deem fit. Um, I'm not gonna tell you that I don't want you to, uh, you know, that I don't want something, um, you know.
No, 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 sorry. But I mean, so, so, I mean, if, I might have Rob do a quick summary, but if, if, if any commission members have specific questions about the levels of service, about the delays, how we're making those improvements, how we are reducing the overall delay, you know, we're happy to get into that unless, you know, Rob just, you know, we can also just rely upon Rob's response.
I, I think, I think that you, um, can probably tell by your experience with the commission that we're not shy about asking questions if we have them. And, um, you might wanna provide that summary that you mentioned, and if commissioners have questions on any particular subject matter, then they'll make themselves known, and we can call upon them in court, in due course.
Okay. Rob, is, um, let me ask you this. Is, is any, is anything I said inaccurate? Am I correct in saying that total delays will be reduced for drivers to that intersection with these improvements and with the conservative real-world numbers that we have provided the commission of actual Chick-fil-A restaurants?
No, the statement is, is absolutely correct, Rob. The statement is absolutely correct. Um, you know, and as Attorney Nuff pointed out, you know, even, even the opposition's consultant could not say that we would not achieve an overall, um, reduction in the delays at the intersection. Um, you know, and, and I think that sums it up right there. Uh, that, that mitigates the little impact that we would have. It actually results in a better condition over the no-build. Um, if you're concerned about congestion, approve this. Let us go to DOT, modify the timings. It significantly lessens the congestion along Route one at that intersection.
Thanks, Rob.
Any of the commissioners have any questions about, um, this subject? Yeah, I think we've, I think we have, uh, Commissioner Francis, did you raise your hand?
You, you just said that if the state grants the corrections, revisions to the traffic light in South Benson and Post, that it will improve traffic even over a no-build?
That's correct, yes. So that with the, with the tiny modifications and with adding Chick-fil-A based upon the actual numbers, not the I T numbers, the actual numbers, if you take all the different movements that you can make through the intersection and total up all the delays that people experience, those total delays will be less with the restaurant, with the timing changes than people currently experience today. That is, that is unrefuted.
And I think the basis of your application to the Police Commission to bring the timing changes to Connecticut DOT is because you believe the timing changes should be done regardless of whether the development is approved and Chick-fil-A is built, that timing improvements will improve the intersection regardless, correct?
That's correct. And, and what I said at the opening is that what that creates, though, is this really wonderful opportunity for us to make the site vital again. You know, and bring people there and put, you know, put the property back on the tax rolls in a meaningful way and, uh, you know, you know, inject some energy into the area and maybe, you know, feed, you know, some of the other retailers in the area. Some, you know, because let's face it, bricks and mortar retail is facing, you know, some real challenges. Um, and, you know, I don't think the folks that first that build next door where CVS is or the folks, the folks who own the property at, um, where Bob's is, I don't think they're gonna object to having a few more customers.
Understood.
And how long might that take to, how long does that typically take to be approved by DOT?
I'll let Rob decide. So, yeah, for, for your record, Rob Altremas. So, um, you know, unlike your commission, you know, there's not a statutory timeframe for DOT's review and approval. Um, when something involves a traffic signal, uh, we met, we talked about this at the last hearing. It goes up to the, the group in Newington. Um, the, the reviews and ultimate approval, it's, it, it could be several months. But the one thing I could tell you is our project, we require an encroachment permit from, from DOT. Um, and just bear with me while I try to fix my video. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
We, we can't build our project without an encroachment permit from DOT. And, and DOT is not going to approve us if we don't properly mitigate or if we cause undue congestion on the, the adjacent roadway network. I mean, that, that, that's essentially the guarantee you, you get with this.
Right, even if we approved it and Connecticut DOT refused to, to the timing, you, you would not be able to go forward with the, with the development.
Right, I, I think it's a case where they have to approve the timing to go forward with the development. Um, or, or they're not gonna give us an encroachment permit. We can't build our project. We, we would not start construction without an encroachment permit.
Very good. Commissioner Brand?
Just wanted to ask generally whether the applicant, whether you, um, have specific information about mitigation efforts that were undertaken in Norwalk and, uh, on Connecticut Avenue, what, uh, results, uh, there were from those mitigation efforts?
Yeah, um, I, I think Clint can respond to that, but a lot of it was just internal to the restaurant itself. You know, I, I forget how old that, that restaurant is, but a lot of it was improvements internally to the kitchen so that they can turn out food faster. Um, I think some of it was, you know, maybe reorienting some of the, um, the queuing on-site. Uh, but I think most of it was internal so that folks can get through there faster. Um, I think that the single lane, um, queue, not a double like ours, so, um, and obviously the, uh, the, the window is much closer to the, the public right-of-way than ours is.
Okay.
And what, uh, success or measure of success have those efforts had in reducing traffic? Norwalk and reducing queuing to the, the main road?
No, I'm sorry, um, from what I understand, so, yes, I mean, they did have a situation at one point where some cars were queuing onto the road, and now it's to the point where there are, there is no longer a queue onto the road, even under the worst-case scenario. So, I mean, they have made, listen, you know, like any successful business, they look at and analyze all the data that they're getting. And that's not a, you know, that wasn't a good experience for their customers. That wasn't a good experience for, you know, travelers in that area, and they made their required changes. And that, you know, though, that experience informs the design of this restaurant um, in terms of the over-parking, in terms of the queuing and all that, and, and as well as the design of the kitchen and the design of the delivery window and door.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Noonan?
Quick, hopefully, quick question. I think it's pretty obvious, but just for the record. The traffic analysis, the traffic report depends upon the state's acceptance of the timing, uh, adjustments that you're proposing, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Nuff, please, uh, Attorney, Commissioner Brown?
One last question. Um, I don't know if you answered this or not, but what exactly are the improvements in the signaling? Or is it making it a longer green light heading southbound or northbound or turning? What are the details of that?
Uh, Commissioner Brown, you, you somehow missed the sleep-inducing discussion that Rob gave a couple of weeks ago.
So, and, and I'm gonna suggest that, that that, that has been explained in the record. It, it's in the, the traffic report, the, you know, um, uh, the, 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 the expert's report. Um, for the, the, the facts of that, I, I would, I, I just, I don't think that we need to spend the time to go back over that again. It's been explained.
Listen, one, Rob, okay, I'll look at that again. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. And I, apologies, but I just didn't, we've spent a lot of time on that and, okay. Any other questions about the rebuttal information that we've heard tonight? Okay, seeing none, Attorney Nuff, any other points to make?
No, um, I just wanna express, you know, the full team and applicant's gratitude for, you know, the diligence with which the commission has, you know, reviewed our data. You know, we know that, you know, there's some complicated things that we dealt with here, but, you know, I think we tried to make it uh, as straightforward as possible. Um, you know, we think this is a really wonderful addition to this area, to the town. Um, as I said, it's, it's not easy finding a retailer or a restaurant of any kind, much less one of this frankly renowned, and, you know, listen, people have really wonderful, um, things to say about Chick-fil-A. Uh, as I mentioned, that they're a wonderful corporate citizen. They're gonna be really wonderful this, for this area of Fairfield. I think this is gonna be a, um, you know, a really attractive site, and we can manage it so that, uh, the town, Chick-fil-A, and all of its customers, and even those passing by the site who never want to visit Chick-fil-A will, um, you know, have a better experience, frankly. So, uh, we thank everyone for their attention, and we, uh, as I, as I noted in the, in my closing memo, um, I think there are substantial evidence in the record to support the application. I think there's substantial evidence in the record to, to require an approval. So, and we look forward to that. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Attorney Nuff. And with that, I will close the public hearing on this item. And we will move on to our next two, uh, items on public hearing tonight. Uh, I'll call them both. It's Forty Hillside Road, change application of Forty Hillside Road LLC to establish a neighborhood design business district on land presently zoned residence double A. And also item number three related Forty Hillside Road.
Excuse me, excuse me. Where is the opportunity for public comment? I'm sorry. I've been listening for two hours to this. And I was assured that there was, there was public comment available. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, and, and you are interrupting. So we spent several hours at our last meeting on this application. We had public comment at the last meeting. We came to our curfew, and the applicant's rebuttal was what was remaining left in that, in that public hearing. As I announced, when we went into our public hearing this evening, we had essentially two matters on, seven fifty Post Road as well as Forty Hillside. I made it very clear to everyone that public comment had closed on seven fifty Post Road. All that remained was the applicant's rebuttal. When the applicant was finished with his rebuttal, we would close the public hearing on that item and move on to Forty Hillside Road, which is what we're doing. We had many hours... No, that's not true. We had many hours of public comment at the hearing at the last meeting. And I take umbrage at the notion that somehow we are precluding members of the public from participating on that item. We've received countless numbers of emails. We had countless, many people who spoke. Attorney Green spent numerous hours. He submitted volumes of paper. He submitted multiple papers this evening, two hours before the meeting. So I take umbrage at the notion that we have precluded any public comment whatsoever on this item. And I'm sorry that you missed it.
I was dialed in before anybody else, and I apologize, um, but...
So you didn't hear me make those statements when, when I, when, at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the...
I was, I was waiting for the public comment, period.
What, did you, were you at the meeting last time?
I stand in support of this application. I think we should have...
Great. Thank you, Mr. Plattner. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too.
Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted to assure the public that we read every single email that we get.
Of course we do.
Public.
But to suggest that we have not heard from the public on seven fifty Post Road is, is, is really disappointing me as the chair in conducting these hearings. And if he was signed on, the first one here, then he would have heard me explain exactly what we were gonna do tonight. So there shouldn't be any surprise about where we were, okay? Sorry. Forty Hillside Road, uh, special permit application of Forty Hillside LLC pertaining to the construction of a veterinary hospital. It's items two and three, called together. Attorney Fallon?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here tonight, uh, representing the applicant, uh, with regard to this matter. As the chair indicates, the property is located at Forty Hillside Road, and there are two applications before you tonight being heard at this combined hearing. The first application is for a change of zone of the parcel from Residence double A to the Neighborhood Design District. And the second is a special permit and site plan approval application, uh, for construction of a new veterinary hospital. The overall purpose of what we bring before you tonight is to provide an opportunity for a new state-of-the-art uh, facility for Greenfield Animal Hospital, which has provided... for Greenfield Animal Hospital, which has provided veterinary service to the folks of Greenfield Hill, the folks of Fairfield, and folks in the region for almost forty years, immediately up the road, I would say, at 212 Hillside Road. Before I talk about the details of the application, I would like to have Dr. Andrew Marsh, who's in the meeting, come forward and just give you an overview with regard to what is motivating this very exciting.
Yeah, it just came up.
That we bring before you. Dr. Marsh?
You're muted.
Dr. Marsh, you're muted.
Thank you, it's not my strong suit, sorry guys, thank you so much again for the opportunity to speak with you all. My family has a deep connection to this community dating back to my grandfather, John Cassib, who started out as a clerk at the grocery store in Greenfield Hill, commercial center after serving in World War II, eventually went on to own the market that was most recently Testo's. That's what attracted my dad and mother here to the area in 1980 when they started Greenfield Animal Hospital, which has been a vibrant business in Greenfield Hill for forty years and counting. My siblings and I all grew up in Greenfield Hill and worked on and off at that clinic through our childhood, watching it grow from a small one-doctor practice to the very busy practice that it is today. I started working there as an associate veterinarian in 2013 and now own the practice after my father's retirement in January 2020. Let me just say that I'm immensely proud of the service we provide this community and the impeccable reputation we have built. Since its inception, we have grown organically through only word-of-mouth advertising and now through independent social media groups like the Fairfield Moms Group on Facebook and online reviews. Despite fielding calls from prospective clients every day, we have not been able to take on any new clients for over a year. This is particularly sad during the pandemic as so many members of Greenfield Hill and the town of Fairfield are looking for pets to comfort and companionship, and yet are struggling to find quality veterinary care. We have looked to modernize and expand the existing practice in order to meet the demand, but we are simply unable due to the lack of physical space and adequate parking on our present lot. For this reason, we began looking for an alternate site to build a state-of-the-art veterinary facility that allows us to remain in the area that I grew up in and that I am dedicated and honored to serve. Ultimately, there are not any existing viable options. So, early, earlier this year, we took a leap of faith and purchased the property at Forty Hillside Road. We have a unique opportunity to build a beautiful practice with outstanding landscaping that fits the rustic charm of Greenfield Hill, and we have the full-fledged support of the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society. The new site will rectify the parking and improve the flow of traffic, which is dangerous for clients and pets at our existing corner lot. We plan to offer improved exam rooms and a lobby, improved comfort room for making difficult decisions, a room for popular alternative medicine such as laser therapy, increased surgical and dental capabilities, among other much-needed enhancements. The increased space will help us provide a better experience for clients and the staff as well as a more fear-free environment for our beloved patients. In short, the new facility will allow us to meet the demand. Ultimately, my family and I have a track record of dedication to this profession and this community, as well as a history of being unobtrusive and thoughtful neighbors. Blessed to meet my wife in veterinary school, who also has her doctorate in veterinary medicine, and we've started a family in the area. My associate, Dr. Galuso, recently relocated to Fairfield and is dedicated as I am. Together, we work with a local community college to provide externship experience for training future veterinary health professionals, as well as we provide internships for the youth of this town through their local high schools. We are committed to continue to provide outstanding veterinary care for the people of this town. And in order to meet the demand now and in the future, I ask for you to consider our proposal for an improved Greenfield Animal Hospital and for us to remain in Greenfield Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Before I talk about and bring some of our consultants up to talk about the specifics of the proposal, let me just say a few words about the zone change application. As you know, this property has been used as a church for many years. That happens to be a permitted use under both the AA zone and also is a permitted use in accordance with the Neighborhood Design Business District. So, there has been the point I'm making, there has been use of this property in a manner that's not inconsistent with the Neighborhood Design Business District. I'd also want to point out, and I know the commission is well aware of this, that this property sits in a transitional area. We are directly nearby and abutting seven separate properties that are zoned currently in the Neighborhood Design Business District. Immediately across the street from us, as you know, is the, sad to say, former Testo's Market and the Greenfield Hill Shopping Center. So, again, this is a classic case of transition, and this is a most effective transitional use between the residential area that exists and the business area that exists as well. We're very, very comfortable with, the Dr. Marsh and our consultants have been working for well over a year on this development, and we've come up with a plan, as you will hear tonight, in terms of the architectural design, the landscaping, the parking, that we know will be very, very compatible and harmonious with all the uses in the area, both the business uses and the residential uses. And indeed, your record has, you probably have not a chance to read them yet, and I know you will, and your diligence, you will. I believe we've submitted some sixty-eight letters of support from people generally, and many, many, many people in the immediate neighborhood. And we do have, as Dr. Marsh said, the support of the Greenfield Village Improvement Society, who early on we contacted about our proposal. So, we are comfortable with that, as I'll elaborate on later on. The underpinnings of the zone change also relate to the comprehensive zoning plan, and indeed, we will address that, and we know that we meet those criteria as well. The special permit proposal, as we've said, is to construct a new veterinary hospital. As you'll hear momentarily, it's a one-story building, twenty feet in height. We're going to comply with all the regulations of the Neighborhood Design Business District. I would point out, interestingly, and I'll probably repeat it later on in the proceedings, in the Neighborhood Design Business District, coverage is allowed at seventy-five percent. Our coverage, as proposed, is sixteen point nine percent. The floor area ratio, FAR, allowed in the Neighborhood Design Business District is one hundred percent. Our floor area ratio will be sixteen percent. Indeed, our floor area ratio after these applications are hopefully granted will be less than what is actually permitted in the Residence AA zone, which is twenty percent. We're also abiding by the provisions of Section twelve point seven point six point four in that the, we are respecting the side yard setback relative to the residential zone that abuts us at that point. And of course, parking, as we'll talk about a little bit as well, is being complied with pursuant to Section twenty-eight point six point six with twenty-eight spaces. So, what we'd like to do at this point is give you a brief overview with regard to our proposal. And to do that, I'm going to ask Mr. Jimmy Zumo of Land Surveying Services to give you an overview of our site plan, our landscape plan, and then I'll have Mr. Gregory Cherry, our architect, overview our architectural design. With regard to introduction of Mr. Zumo, I would want to point out that we did receive a copy of the email that Ms. Pooley sent to Mr. Went, I believe, yesterday. We have absolutely no objections to conditions of approval that would reflect the modifications that she suggested of the plan, which are not really significant, but we certainly want to make part of the record that we are aware of her requests, and we will change the plans, modify them to address those comments appropriately. So, Mr. Zumo, could you please give us the overview of the site plan?
You're muted there, Jerry.
That's the first time that happened to me. James Zumo, Land Surveying Services over here in Fairfield, 1275 Post Road, Suite A20. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the animal hospital, well, proposed animal hospital. As a dog owner, you know, this was something that, you know, was exciting when I, when it came across my desk. I got, you know, took some time and effort on this one. Emily, I don't know if you got my email, if you want to screen share or if you want me to screen share, I could do either or for the site plan.
Up to you, I'm happy to share if you, if you want me to.
Yeah, you want to share just the site plan for now? All right, so, just a brief overview of the site. I'm sure you've all had a long time to take a look at the project. What we're going to be doing is, you know, building a new seven thousand square foot facility on the site, taking place of what the Jehovah's Witness Church was previously. We're going to be utilizing the existing same, more or less the same entryway that the Jehovah's Witness, the church was using, shifted over to the, to the, to the north about four or five feet, and then coming into the back with parking on the right-hand side, looping into the back with parking in the middle and on the sides, with a load-off and drop-off area in the rear of the site and in a, in a long loop around the back so we can accommodate, you know, two-way traffic, making sure that, you know, no one's backing out and running into people. The entire driveway system will be, will be curb with either concrete or bituminous curbing, all six inches in height, to make sure that all runoff created from the new driveway will be, will be captured and put into our two separate drainage systems. One in the front, which is the larger of the two, and the one in the rear, which is the smaller. Based off of Laura Pooley's comments, those sizes may change, but their location won't. It could change by one or two units, but we'll have to address that, it is in the engineer's hands right now. The, the other thing to note is the grading on the site. An important thing to note about the grading is that the existing, the existing building is built up very high on the site, higher than what we would, what we would like. So, what we'll be planning on doing is kind of dropping the site down a little bit to level out the grading. The site naturally slopes from north to south. We'll be continuing that slope while grading out to make sure that we can, you know, accommodate, one, a driveway that isn't too steep and car doors slamming, and two, making sure that our handicap spaces are able to get into the front door, since this whole entire building will be on grade, more or less. And three, so that we can, you know, slope water away from the building and make sure that it's heading into the five catch basins that we have proposed throughout the parking lot. What we did try to do in the, in the aspects of design was continue with the existing driveway that was, that was built in the back. It wasn't in bad condition, and it was graded, you know, fairly well. So, what we're planning on doing is, is maintaining those grades, altering them some since our new parking lot will be larger, and just making sure that everything is harmonious with what was there at the beginning. You know, not altering, you know, not altering runoff in any way that wasn't, you know, being runoff before. Again, all of our runoff will be held underground into a Coltech system. Many Coltechs are suited for this site, Laura Pooley has reviewed the plan. She just had a couple, you know, minor, minor recommendations that are in the engineer's hands right now. I will have all those revisions within the week. On the east side of the property, or on the south side of the property, we have our utility pad. And basically, I mean, the building is, it's, it's not going to look intrusive to the neighborhood, it's going to be, you know, it's, it's a one-story building, not two stories, no elevators required. You know, it's, it's going to be a solid, you know, nice, beautiful building for the Greenfield Hill area. And that's the gist of the site layout.
Thank you, Jimmy. I think we're good with the screen share, Emily. We also submitted with the original application a landscape plan, and we submitted a revised landscaping plan, just recently, I think just today in fact, that made further enhancements, which I will comment on later on in the presentation, based upon conversations we had with neighbors with regard to enhancement of the landscaping plan. Greg Cherry is our architect, he's with us here tonight. Greg, could you join us and give us a brief overview of the architectural design?
Yes, would you mind doing a sharing plan with the rendering? That's one oh two in our packet. I think one of the easiest ways, not the elevations, the rendering, which is one oh two. I mean, my elevations show what's going on, but the rendering is that, that's one oh three, which is fine too. And there's one oh two, great. This is the best I can have anyone see as to what this building will look like. Very accurate to what was considered design-wise, and simply it has, as stated earlier, single-story space. The dormers through the roof are simply decorative, they're, they don't have any function up there. And we broke up, I broke up the size of the roof with several different dormers in different directions, and a little cupola in the center. It has asphalt shingle roof and cloudboard siding from the window, bottom of the windows on up, and from the windows on down, there is a, what's referred to as a water table of stone. Not too much more I'd really like to say, I have gabled ends, rake ends on the, on the gables and the dormers, and I have about a two-foot overhang on the eaves. We would probably have some downlights inside the overhangs in certain areas for lighting the face of the building slightly, and, and of course, we need lighting at any of the exit doors and things like that, required by code, of course. That's about all I really need to say at this point.
Thank you, Greg. Good, Emily, thank you for that, the screen sharing. So, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to discuss the standards of approval. We'll talk about the zone change again in a minute, but let's talk about the special permit, since you've just seen the site plan and the architectural design. Pursuant to Section twenty-five point seven point seven, you have to make a number of findings. One, that the character of such, that the proposal of such, is of such a character as to harmonize with the neighborhood. I'd point out a few things in that regard. First of all, historically, I think it's relevant to that standard that the Greenfield Animal Hospital has been in this neighborhood immediately up the street for, as we say, almost forty years. I also think it's appropriate for you, when you've had a chance to review them, to take into consideration on this point the tremendous support that we've received from the neighborhood, not only the society itself, but also the sixty-eight letters I referred to. And I also hope you'll consider the architectural design, the landscaping plan that we've submitted, all designed to ensure harmonization with the neighborhood. I think as Greg's comments and the rendering show, it's a very low-level building, it's attractively designed. It certainly is the perfect, I think, both use and building for this transitional piece of property, which abuts residential property, but also directly abuts, you know, significant Neighborhood Design Business District properties. And this is a kind of transitional use that I think you'd look for there. You also want to look at, again, to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character, well, I think I've just spoken to that. I think this property does do just that. You want to look at preserving and enhancing the appearance and beauty of the community and protecting property values. Here, I would submit to you, based upon the design that's been made, the use of the property that is proposed, there will not be any detrimental impacts to the neighborhood at all. In fact, I think the, with all due respect, I think the use, the previous use of the church, even though it was a special exception use in the residential zone, was. was a special exception use in the residential zone, uh, was more impacting and, and less, uh, less attractive. Uh, thirdly, uh, we've been very, very sensitive in terms of, I said, our architectural design, our landscaping plan. And we've reached out over the past year of planning here to the neighbors, including our immediate neighbors. And even to the extent that we have not apparently fully accomplished, uh, an agreement with our immediate neighbor, there were aspects of that, those conversations, uh, that we had, that we, as I'll elaborate on in a minute, incorporated into our plan at the request of the Petersons. Uh, the other standard that you wanted us to look at was the avoidance of undue traffic congestion. Here, there's a major enhancement to the parking situation. We are, we're providing 28 parking spaces. We need that additional parking. We need it now at the current location at 212 Hillside. And, and it's important that we have that. Uh, we have proper aisle width, as Mr. Zumo indicated, for two-way traffic, 24-foot aisles. We've created a turnaround to allow for delivery vehicles and things of that nature. We've created a pickup and drop-off area for, uh, safety for delivery. And, uh, the design was, again, addressed, this whole program is addressed to meet the very much ongoing and current needs of our clients for veterinary services in facilities that are state-of-the-art and will allow the preparation and the, 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 the kind of care that Dr. Marsh and his colleagues have always brought and want to continue to bring. So we think that we do satisfy the standard relative to, uh, section 25, and we would hope you would agree with that. As you know, it's not, not generally my habit to anticipate rebuttal, but, and I certainly would want to reserve my ultimate rebuttal, but since you have received some letters, um, I've thought in the sake of, uh, just being efficient and to cover everything, I would, I would cover the points, uh, that at least have been raised by those who've spoken with concerns with regard to the, the project. And the first thing I wanted to talk about was spot zoning. Uh, I, I submitted, uh, a memorandum, if you will, a very short memorandum, but with some citations, uh, relative to the concept of spot zoning. So let's talk about spot zoning for a minute. The traditional standard by which spot zoning is, is referenced is a change of zone affecting a small area of land and, and in the material I submitted to you, I underline "and," a change which is out of harmony with the comprehensive plan for the good of the community as a whole. We'll talk about the comprehensive plan momentarily. I also, in that material, cite Judge Fuller's treatise where he states, and he cites the case as well, "The nature of other properties in the area are also considerations in a claim of spot zoning." But all of these considerations tie into whether or not the zone change is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And lastly, I, I cite the material again from Fuller with the case citations, "The spot zoning concept has become obsolete because the size of the parcel involved in a zone change is immaterial. If the commission's action meets the two-part test, that the change is in accordance with the comprehensive zoning plan and is reasonably related to the normal police powers and purposes under the general statute." So in this particular instance, I would respectfully suggest to you, this spot zoning is not a concept here that in any way, shape, or form would indicate that you would not have a proper authority to grant this application. I think clearly, um, this isn't a case of spot zoning because the comprehensive plan of development does in fact, uh, provide guidance and, and support for the zone change we seek. Specifically, at page 42, section Roman numeral 231, under policies regarding Greenfield Hill, it states, and I quote, "The Greenfield Hill Business District is a neighborhood design business district which promotes uses appropriate to the area." And again, remember, we've been here for 40 years. "Provide safeguards from over-expansion and limits business and commercial uses to those of a neighborhood scale." Again, this is a neighborhood veterinary office.
Right. That, Ms. Attorney Fallon, you, you, you're speaking about this parcel as if the zone change had already been granted. Could you, could you, in, in the context of the application for this own change, could?
Yes. I, I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to the plan of conservation and development on two levels. One, uh, to refute a claim of spot zoning. And number two, to address the very basis or one of the bases on which you would grant the zone change. And that is compliance with and consistency with the plan of conservation and development.
Right. And, and that, that second inquiry that you're mentioning is specifically whether the P O C D includes an indication that the zone change should be, uh, appropriate.
Yes.
And, and not just generally with respect to the desired zone change and how the proposed fits with that zone. So, uh, there was a passage also which, in the P O C D, I think, which, um, expressly states that, um, zone changes, you know, in, in incursion into the residential areas for, of, of commercial should be avoided. An extension of the, of the commercial, you know, neighborhood design district into residential areas should be avoided.
That is in the plan, but as the commission knows from past actions, that, that, that is, that is a general, uh, recommendation. That's a general policy. It does not control in a situation such as this where you can look at not only the provisions of what the, the P O C D says about the nature, the policies regarding Greenfield Hill. And I, I read it once. It's again, section Roman numeral 231. I think we fall well under that. The other point that I was going to make is too, if you look at page 81, under economic goals, as expressed in the P O C D, section Roman numeral 3101, it says, "Encourage economic development that provides jobs and services to our population." That's the essence of this application, the services that we're providing. So let me be clear, and I appreciate the commission or the chairman's clarification. I, I'm referring to the P O C D at this point for two reasons. One, because that is certainly something you need to look at when you consider the zone change itself. And number two, I'm bringing it up because the issue or the question of spot zoning has been raised. And in the concept of the law, as I provided it to you, again, the P O C D and, and compatibility of the respect, the, the, the zone change with the P O C D is an issue there.
Right. So, I, I, I understand, and you've made that clear, the two different points. The, the reference you cited on page 81 about promoting commercial development and jobs and so forth, that's a general policy, not specific to Greenfield Hill, right?
What it says is, it, it says jobs and services to our population.
Understand. That's a general.
Yes.
It's a general policy with respect to the town of Fairfield, not specifically to Greenfield Hill, right?
Right. And I think the, the specific policies with regard to Greenfield Hill, and specifically section 2.3.1, is also supportive of our, uh, application for the zone change.
Understood. And I'm not trying to be argumentative. I.
I, I.
There's also conflicting, there's also a conflicting policy in the Greenfield Hill, uh, section of the P O C D, which says that we shouldn't, uh, expand the commercial district, the neighborhood design district into the residential. That should be resisted. Um, and so how are we to interpret conflicting, conflicting policies?
That's your job. I mean, I, that's why, that's your job. I mean, the P O C D, as you ladies and gentlemen know well, is an advisory document. It is not, for example, your zoning regulations that mandate compliance. It's a planning document. It's a document that you have to review and you have to review on a case-by-case basis. My position, I believe, would clearly be in this particular case, that if you were faced with a situation where there was a, a desire to expand unilaterally, uh, the, the, the neighborhood design business district in an area unencumbered by that district, in a, in a highly residential area, then you, a totally residential area, then you might very well find persuasive the policy goal of avoidance of those types of zone changes. However, when you are faced with this particular situation, where the property is in fact surrounded by seven different neighborhood design business district properties, where it has been used for a use that was not residential, but was, would actually be a permitted use in the business zone, that is a church.
Also permitted in the residential zone. It's, it's.
It has a special exception.
Uh, that, that's correct. But it's a permitted, it was a permitted use in the double A zone on a residential, residential.
It was, but it wasn't a residential use. It was a permitted use. The point, the point I'm making is, I think in this particular situation, using the discretion you have and using the P O C D as your planning document, I believe the persuasive, uh, policy goal here is the specific policy goal of what you're, what you try to accomplish with regard to the Greenfield Hill Business District.
And so at, at the, at the end of the day, it's squarely in our discretion. And we could just as easily find the other policy statement more, more persuasive than, than the other. And I just, I, I think, I think it's important that we acknowledge that.
The commission, the commission is vested with its greatest discretion when it comes to matters with regard to amending the zone. There's, there's no doubt about that. What we are relying on here, and respectfully, is your good judgment in terms of looking at a situation that involves a, a use that's been in this neighborhood for over 40 years, serves the population in the manner that it does, on a site that is now vacant and before that was a church, has been designed in such a way, architecturally and landscaping, whatever, to ensure, uh, you know.
And, 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 and fair. I'm trying to get through this. I'm looking at the time. I want to make sure that we, we use our time wisely. You're hitting on all the high points. I'd like to focus on some, some other questions that are, I think, need to be addressed.
Sure.
Time experience, time experience, time and experience dictating the need for the change. Help me understand why we should rezone a residential parcel not presently in the neighborhood design business district. Admittedly, it is adjacent across the street, okay? When we have thousands of square feet in the neighborhood design business district that are presently vacant and looking for tenants.
You, you, it's like we planned this because I'm going through all these rebuttal points. And the next rebuttal point that I wanted to go through.
It's not a rebuttal point. It's a, it's a specific, it's a specific consideration that we have to affirmatively consider, you know, in, in the time and experience dictating the need for the change.
All right.
I live around the corner.
And you'll let me address that.
Please.
That's where I'm going. And give me a little latitude in addressing it. One of the issues that has come up in, in terms of the few letters that have been submitted in opposition is the size and scope of the project, which relates directly to, and I think it's mentioned, your question is mentioned in one of the, one of the letters. Why can't you use all this space that's here?
No, it's, that's a different question. That's a different question. I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't ask why this applicant shouldn't or couldn't use existing vacant, uh, 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 space in the other areas. Because they're two different applications, right? We first need to consider whether we should rezone that parcel to a neighborhood design business district. And we have like four factors that we have to consider. And, and they're not with reference to this applicant per se, right? Because if we rezone it, if we rezone it, and this applicant, for whatever reason, decides, eh, now's not the right time, COVID, financing fell through, whatever, we have now rezoned that parcel. So I need to understand, we all need to understand, what about the time and experience of our time and experience dictate the need for a zone change of this parcel? And we have so, when, when, when there are thousands of square feet across the street. Did you please mute your line? Thank you.
Well, he's just like, don't assume that this is a done deal, guys. A done deal.
I'm sorry, attorney. Uh, uh, Emily, can you recognize who that is? And can you please mute their line?
I'm trying.
Attorney Fallon, I apologize.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your efforts.
So I'm trying to understand what about time and experience dictates the need for, to, to change, to rezone this parcel when we have thousands of square feet that's, that's vacant across the street.
Right. And I'm going to answer that right now. First of all, let me just preliminarily point out, incorporated in that question you made was this matter of, well, once the zone is changed, it's changed forever. And I think somebody in one of their letters said anything can happen. Just, just to put that in context, as the commission knows, and then I'm going to go back to your primary question. Any change of use would require a new site plan and a new special permit application and approval. And the same standards that I reviewed pertaining to section 25.7 would apply here as well. And, and you have to be convinced in a special permit and site plan application that what was being proposed did not hinder or discourage appropriate development, protect property values, no problem with traffic. So I just want to point out that the zone change does not give anyone a carte blanche for any use other than the use that we want you to approve here. Now, to get to the question with.
But it's still rezoned, uh, it's in the neighborhood design business district. It's, it's no, a residential parcel.
Nothing. I was just answering the second portion of your question. You, you mentioned the issue of, well, once it's rezoned, what if they don't want to go forward with it?
It would be something else.
You, you're protected there by way of a special permit and site plan approval process. Now, with regard to change time circumstances, I'm going to ask Dr. Marsh to come back because one of the things that we wanted to address is why this parcel, why now? Which directly relates to why not other parcels and why time and experience dictates that at this point in time, it's appropriate to change the zone of this transitional piece of property. So, Dr. Marsh, if you could come back, and in anticipation of Dr. Marsh's comments and this whole issue of size and scope, which I know is a different question than the direct question you're raising, and I'm going to come back to that, I would point out that, as I said before, the coverage here that we propose is 16.9%, okay? And the FAR we propose is 16%. 16% is less FAR than you'd be allowed if it was residentially zoned. But Dr. Marsh, if you could join us again, because the, the analysis that he's going to give you in terms of why we need this facility and why we need this facility here and why it's of the size it is and why the properties across the street or down the street would not meet that requirement relate directly to your discretionary determination of whether or not it's reasonable to believe that times and circumstances are such that this zone change of this parcel, this transitional parcel, which abuts neighborhood design district property, is appropriate. Dr. Marsh?
Thank you, John. Um, yeah, obviously we have a bit of a unique situation. We did look at other options, um, in the area, and there's really nothing that exists there that's suitable to the veterinary health profession. Um, you know, there's a lot of different aspects of, of practicing veterinary medicine and the layout and optimal design of a veterinary practice that's fairly specific to providing healthcare to, to animals. And, you know, so some of those different, uh, you know, things that we were looking at is a lot of, uh, times we were looking at different practices and we saw that they all struggled with the same issues was that, you know, eventually as, uh, there was advancements in medicine and natural growth in the practice, they would run out of space and they would have this very incongruous internal flow or they would add, you know, to the building and it would end up essentially looking like a, a patchwork exterior. So we really want to avoid that and keep that in mind and do something that sort of right the first time to minimize changes and to allow kind of the, the landscape to mature around it and really to have a, a beautiful setting for people to bring in their, their pets. You know, also, there's just a lot of different needs in terms of the front of the house of how you operate a veterinary practice. We're trying to adopt as a profession, uh, we'll call fear-free practices to reduce anxiety amongst pets, um, and to, uh, improve the client experience. So you need, uh, for instance, you know, uh, lobbies that allow separate spaces for cats and dogs so they don't have to interact. Uh, you know, you need, uh, more exam rooms than maybe were historically used in a veterinary practice because we really like to try to get anxious pets, uh, or aggressive pets, you know, straight into an exam room. So if those are already in use, you know, that, we can't do that. And, you know, it's a pretty unique building that you're able to put up these, these types of things. Uh, similarly, you know, we want to have one area where you check in and go in. and go into the exam room and another area where you check out and leave the hospital because we have a lot of, you know, different size and attitude, uh, pets that we're, we're seeing. You know, we also need unique things like, uh, you know, uh, comfort rooms where we have a, a nice cozy private setting, you know, in case we have to make these difficult decisions for, for pets as they're suffering. And these are, these are people's family. I mean, anyone that owns a pet, and especially now, this is family. There's some, a lot of people think that's a harder loss than, than actual physical family sometimes. So, you know, we want to have that, that special place for them in this hospital. You know, and then you take it to the back of the house and it's, you know, there's an enormous, uh, you know, the layout has to be really kind of particular. You need a separate dental suite, you know, in order to reduce contamination as you're aerosolizing bacteria with ultrasonic scalers. And you need radiation safety for dental X-rays and for regular radi, uh, X-rays to be taken. You know, you need separate areas for an ultrasound unit because you need a dark environment to optimize that kind of image. Um, and the, the examples kind of go on and on. Um, you know, we need break areas for the staff and areas for continuing education uh, to be done and different, different things like that. So, you know, as you're looking at some of these different buildings, it, it's just, there's so many different, uh, pro, problems with, uh, trying to fit a veterinary practice in a space that's really not designed for a veterinary practice.
So, so I, I appreciate all that information. It sounds like, um, there will be substantially, um, more different types of services that you'll be able to offer in this facility than, than you do with the current twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred square foot, uh, practice, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, frankly, forty years ago, there were a lot of services, you know, that, uh, there were not a lot of services that are now the standard of care, that are really, you know, needed to deliver proper care to, to pets. And we don't, you know, we've done our best, uh, where we are, but it's, it's not a sustainable thing. Um, and then obviously the, the parking problem on the corner there, you know, is, is getting dangerous. We're bringing pets in and out through COVID, uh, and trying to be responsible, uh, you know. And it, it's, it's just not, not tenable, uh, really. We just either have to considerably downsize our, our population or, um, and that, that's leaving a lot of people out. I mean, it has literally been over a year since we've accepted a new client into the practice. We're still have not lost growth because people are getting more puppies and getting, you know, kittens or existing clients.
Mm-hmm. And, and so, so some of the things you mentioned, uh, you know, do you have a, a separate dental uh, uh, facility, like room space now?
No, uh, we're doing our dentistry in our treatment area. So it's on the same wet table that we would use to draw blood and everything. So we're having to be very creative in the space. And, you know, for instance, if we have to take a dental X-ray, the entire facility has to clear out six feet from the collimator at least in order to be safe. So we're stopping, moving, taking an X-ray. And they have quite a few more teeth than we do, so these X-rays take a little bit longer, uh, than it would on a, on a person.
Yeah, and I won't go through all the rest of it, but it sounds like you're just going to, you, you, you will have an opportunity to have many more different types of services in specialized facilities. One of the things that you mentioned was you, you referred to the existing facility as your veterinary practice and this new proposed facility as a hospital. Um, can you comment on the distinction between those two terms and descriptions? And, um.
To my knowledge, uh, it, it, to my knowledge, there's not a, a distinction. I think it's just semantics, but I might be wrong on that. I, you know, refer to it either way. I mean, I think we have a veterinary hospital now, but it's insufficient. Um, you know, to kind of what, what we need for, what's more modern nowadays.
So I'm drifting a little bit away from the, the, the zone change, but, um, you know, given that you would offer all these different types of services and some ways refer to it interchangeably as a hospital, um, would they be, would you be servicing, you know, uh, uh, extended hours, uh, different hours than you have today, weekends, um, you know, emergency services, things like that, that you don't do today?
Yeah, absolutely not. Um, I, I, I love Greenfield Animal Hospital the way it is. Uh, we're not trying to, uh, do anything different. Um, in fact, we would not advertise and we have not advertised in the past. It's all been organic. It's all been word of mouth. Um, you know, we, uh, uh, we, we want to continue to be the, the small animal general practice for this community. And we're very happy for people to go to any of the number of excellent emergency clinics in our area, you know, for that, so.
You mentioned, you haven't, Attorney Fallon, if I could please just ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Marsh, um, Doc, Dr. Marsh, forgive me. Um, you, you mentioned you haven't been able to add new clients in the last year or so. You're going to expand your facilities. Have you done some sort of business model where you're thinking about now taking on new clients? How, are you going to have, do you have a plan for expansion, growth rather, you know, of, of the client base?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, like I, like I said before, it's all been organic, so it's sort of meeting the demand. I mean, because of COVID, we had to increase our staff quite a bit just because, you know, getting patients in and out of the building and different, uh, kind of considerations that way. So we have a pretty, uh, large staff. We just don't have the physical space and we can't bring on, you know, for instance, a veterinarian to help meet, you know, what we're, what we're getting as, uh, as local demand. So we want to be able to essentially very organically grow with the way we have been. I mean, you can kind of see over the last ten, or at least since I've been there, over the last eight years, you know, there's just a natural growth in the veterinary profession and it was exacerbated by COVID. But we have not, you know, been able to, uh, be a part of, of that, uh, nor do we really need or want to. We just really want to be here for, for the people in our community.
You plan, you plan to add another veterinarian to the practice?
Yeah, I think at this point, um, we would, uh, have to consider that. Um, you know, Rachel and I work as hard as we, uh, possibly can, but we both, you know, I have a family to get home to at the end of the night. So, um, you know, we, we would, I've talked to different, um, really exceptional people and we're lucky to work well with the kind of referral community. So we know, uh, who are really exceptional veterinarians. Uh, so we're hoping to eventually bring on, once that, uh, is dictated by the amount of clients we grow to.
Right. And expanded staff?
Yeah, we will, you know, we, we have, like I said, expanded staff quite a bit, but it's a continuous process to try to make sure we, you know, obtain and retain the best possible people. So, uh, yeah, we would end up having to increase our staff as well.
Do you have any, any sort of idea of numbers, like staff going from X to Y? Number of cli, of, of family, you know, clients from X to Y and so forth?
Uh, not really. I could try to get back to you, you know, um, no, it's, it's sort of more meet, meet the, the need kind of a thing. So, uh, you know, you have some generalities, like, you know, for each veterinarian, uh, during a working day or you want to have at least two to three technicians and one, uh, receptionist. So if you have a two-doctor practice, you need at least two receptionists. But a lot of that's been turned on its head with COVID. You know, our call volume some days is over two hundred and fifty calls and we have two, uh, receptionists to try to, try to meet that because so much more of it's over the phone. So it has been, you know, ch, uh, modified a little bit with COVID, but hopefully it will get back to normal.
Right. And you looked at the other alternatives in the Greenfield Hill Neighborhood Design District and none of those other properties were suitable for the type of space that you needed to, uh, you know, execute this, you know, your plan?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it would have been a lot easier, you know, to, to go that route, right? I mean, that would have been preferential for, for us, um, and I'm sure for you guys as well. But, um, yeah, I, like I said, it's just such a unique sort of a, a need. So it's hard to, to push that into a existing, uh, layout. Um, and so, yeah, we, we, we have.
Right. And I understand that, you know, single floor because the animals are injured and, and all that kind of stuff. And, and I can appreciate that. Can you, can you comment a little bit about the scale of, of this? I mean, uh, you know, does it need to be seven thousand feet? Why, why seven thousand square feet?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, you know, a little bit, uh, it's, it's partly to, to meet present demand and kind of have optimal exam room sizes and different things like that. Um, it's also just kind of being a little bit forward-thinking about our natural organic growth and not wanting to try to add to the building over time, which we saw a lot of practices in the area having to do. And it, and it's, you know, for just even aesthetics and the landscaping, it's just suboptimal. And then also just the internal workflow of the hospital is not coherent. So our hope is to put something up that, you know, fits, um, that doesn't seem obtrusive, but also that, you know, allows us not to ever have to modify it. Um, you know, that, that's the main goal there.
Right. Okay. Thanks. I, I don't have any more questions for Dr. Marsh. Does any other commissioner have any? Yeah. Commissioner Braun.
Um, what's, what's the change in scale and square footage and services offered between what you're doing now and what you're doing then? And also between the structure that's there now and the structure that you're building? It's hard to tell from all the plans how, how it's different from the old one to the new one.
Yeah, it's, it's substantially different. I mean, we, the present building says it's about two thousand seven hundred square feet. Some of that is more usable than others. Yeah, but anyone that's been into our practice, you know, can vouch for the, the significant need. So we have all kinds of, of issues. I mean, uh, storage, you know, we're having to, to store things in very unique areas of the practice and having people picking up and getting down. We're really trying to make sure, you know, everyone's, uh, staying safe with that. But we had two exam rooms up until, um, about midway through the, the pandemic, in which case I, uh, tore my office out and it's like kind of a hodgepodge third exam room and I'm running upstairs every time to make a phone call. And, um, and, uh, and, and in there with our office manager where we're talking over each other. Um, you know, like I said, with the kind of things like dentistry or ultrasound, I'm wheeling it into an exam room. We're having to wait for, uh, one person to, to finish up, uh, their exam to try to get, and to get the next one. And so the, the, you know, the wait times are increasing. Then if you just look generally, I mean, we're used to being a practice where people can kind of walk in if you have a, a sick pet or can get into surgery when you need it. And that's not the case now just because we're having to be so creative with the use of the, uh, the existing building. So, you know, it's, it's essentially going to allow for an expansion of, you know, something like two to three exam rooms, uh, which we have now, uh, closer to eight. You know, again, get to that. It's, it's advantageous to get pets into exam rooms and not waiting in the lobby because we do deal with a lot of different attitudes of pets and sizes of pets.
And I, I appreciate that. And Commissioner Braun, if we could move on to new ground? I mean, we just went over the difference between the existing facility and the proposed facility, exam rooms, square footage.
Yeah, I, I was going to ask him if they board animals now or if there, is that some added service? I don't think that was covered yet.
Boarding animals is prohibited in the Neighborhood Design District. That is not a service they can offer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marsh. Uh, thank you, Doctor. Uh, 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 just to follow up the, the stream of discussion that we've had, the, the chairman's comments and, uh, Dr. Marsh's. Two things. I think it's very, very important, first of all, it, it, Commissioner Braun's question was related to this as well. This is not an application that's designed with a business plan to explode an existing practice that's been there for forty years. What this is about, when you look at it in essence and light, especially of Dr. Marsh's comments, he used the word meet the needs. He talked about what he's currently doing in terms of trying to meet the needs of this community's veterinary needs in the facility that he is in. And he's explained why the facility that he needs to meet those needs going forward in this neighborhood, without any advertising, without doing anything other than being there, as he and his father have been for forty years, requires this facility. Now we get to the second point, which is the question. Then what's the basis for your ultimate discretionary determination? The time and experience dictates that the change is necessary, et cetera, et cetera, and warranted, okay? Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I would suggest to you that the basis for that finding is that you have a very important, community-based, vital veterinary practice with so many loyal, loyal supporters, customers, patrons and patients, as you can see from all the letters you've received. And they're at a point where if they're going to remain in this neighborhood, in this community, they need the zone change that we seek here as part of the applications this evening. And without that, they're not going to be able to function for another forty years at that location, taking care of our animals. And, and, and I know as a, as the son of a veterinarian, uh, the practices has changed over the last forty years. And so when you hear about all these dental and other things, this is state of the art. This is expected now. So I hope I've answered, we've answered your question with regard to that fundamental issue. Why is time and experience dictating now that we should change this zone of this transitional piece of property? We respect ultimately your discretion on this because I've been very candid. Obviously, you have a great deal of discretion. But I think that there's, considering the forty-year history of this practice, the increased needs for veterinary services in this post-COVID era in this neighborhood, in Greenfield Hill, this is a very reasonable application in that regard. And I hope we've addressed the, the question of the size. There's a few other mi, uh, I, I won't call them minor or not minor, but there's a few other points that some of the letters have made uh, in, in, in the Peterson at all letters. Uh, this is a use that's explicitly permitted pursuant to section twelve point five point sixteen, uh, animal hospital, veterinary hospital without boarding. A section fifteen point five point three, which prescribes the four thousand square foot limitation, applies to business and professional offices. Another use category, not this use, and therefore that restriction doesn't apply. Also, the application, as I said before, is in compliance with section twelve point seven point six point four. That section says it requires compliance with the street setback, um, requirements of an adjacent residence district. Assuming the approval of the zone change, which you'll have to deal with first, the adjacent residence district here is in the side yard. And therefore, the residence district requirements have to apply to the side yard, and we have applied them. Indeed, uh, our side yard setback from fourteen hillside is twenty-six feet. Assuming the zone change, again, then the adjacent district uh, in the street setback, the front yard, if you will, is the Neighborhood Design Business District. And that's the setback that we're applying there. So there's no question that we comply with section twelve point seven point six point four. The last thing I'd want to point out is there were in, uh, the Peterson letter, uh, some requests, uh, should the application be granted? And these involve, one, the replacement of the existing fence with a six-feet stockford, stockade fence along the entire property, shared property line, uh, green giant trees closely spaced to screen. And, uh, also that we would, uh, prune the existing yew trees, but we would not remove them. All of those things can be agreed to. They are agreed to as a condition of approval. Indeed, I think the revised landscaping plan, uh, shows the, uh, the additional green giant trees that were requested. So, um, that's basically where we are. I would reserve an opportunity for a final summary and rebuttal, um, at the appropriate time. And I thank the chair and I thank the members of the commission for their time and attention. Thank you.
Like we may have lost, uh, the chair.
Hear me, but, um, I've lost pretty much everyone on the call.
We can hear you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear us?
I have a question.
Should we, is the chairman with us? I don't want to just, you, you sure, the.
I see the chairman going in and out.
What, do you want to take over for now?
Yeah. Uh, so is there a question from a commissioner? Commissioner Francis?
Can anyone else hear me?
Yes.
I, I got my signal back now. Apologies.
We can hear you now and see. Commissioner, Commissioner Francis was going to ask a question.
Yes, Commissioner Francis.
Mm-hmm.
The facility, the, so the setback along, is it Hillside Road or Bronson Road there? Is not the same as the houses are set back?
The, 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 I can't, the setback that, that, that would be applied if you're, if you grant the zone change is the street setback that's.
No, I heard it.
In the Neighborhood Design Business District. And, and, and then on the side yard, adjacent. adjacent to the, uh, to the fourteen, that has to be compliant with the, um, double A standard, which it is.
Okay, but are, are the neighbors upset that the houses are further back than this is going to be?
I, I can't speak for the neighbors, but I, I can say that the only house, the, the, I, 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 I believe the only house is the, the Peterson house on the corner, and I'm not sure what their setback is. It's a corner lot, but I don't know.
And also the color being s- is stark white, I gather. It's, it's a very attractive building. But it might be uh, more acceptable in a, a paler color to match this, those lovely stones underneath. It just looked very stark and white to me.
Mr. Cherry, are you still on with us? Would you want to address Commissioner Francis's, uh, question there?
Uh, yes, um.
Thank you.
I agree with your statement, um. The idea of getting maybe away from solid white might be in order. Um, I was considering the possibility of a light gray. I haven't discussed that with the owners, um, but, uh, that, you know, a light gray on the top half of, uh, a light warm gray, which the stones would tend to be a warm brown. And, uh, that, that's a very real possibility.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, uh, have any other questions for Attorney Fallon on the applicant, Commissioner Brandon?
Uh, just, uh, an, another question for the architect. Are there specific architectural features in the design that you consider? You're particularly representative of this residential neighborhood?
When we, we, yeah, we do take on, um, all residential feel with the fact that I've attempted to reduce the amount of massive size in the roof system or the building itself by creating several pieces of, uh, movement in both the wall system as well as the roof, which, uh, reduces the scale of the structure. If it was a large, very plain rectangle, it, it would take on a much more uh, commercial feel and, uh, all the features of the building with the rake overhangs, the, uh, soffit overhangs at the eaves, uh, the, the residential material in the clad board and the asphalt. It kind of matches the residential area.
Thank you. And just a question for Attorney Fallon. Forgive me if we touched on this before. Is there, you think, a, a clear limiting principle for the, for the zone change in terms of, you know, extension of the, uh, the district, uh, the commercial district to this parcel? As opposed to more broadly creeping into downtown?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, I think the limiting factor is the location of the property a- and, and where it is, uh, and, and its previous use. Say, I don't see this as a situation as you might have in other neighborhoods where you can, you're gonna have a domino effect here. Uh, this, this property is fairly well locked into where it is. It's, it's directly across the street from where it is. Um, so I, I, I don't think this is a situation as we've sometimes seen in the past where, well, now we are creeping in a residential zone. I don't think that's gonna happen. And I think, I think the Greenville Village Improvement Society would be very vigilant and always has been very vigilant about that very type of thing. But again, in this case, because I think of the circumstances, they are supporting the application.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we need to get into, uh, public comment for, to, um, finish this off before the end of the, um, the end of the evening. I know we have, uh,
We have about eight people who've signed up.
Yeah.
We ready to go?
Unless anyone has any burning questions on issues that we haven't already covered, that's what my proposal, if, uh, you've got more questions before we get there, please raise your hand. Commissioner Braun?
Quick question. Is there a rendering you could provide us that shows this building in comparison to the building that's there now? And in relation to the nearby houses, like an aerial or something?
Well, I would say the, the, the building, the, the church building isn't, is not there anymore. The property is vacant. So we, we can't do that. Uh, we have a rendering, obviously, that was displayed earlier. Uh, I, I know it's probably everyone's desire to close the hearing tonight, but I would suggest to you that the staff could provide uh, a Google, uh, imagery or something like that, uh, for your work session to, to address that.
Yeah, I'm sure Google Earth still has, uh,
Well, I'm looking at a Google imagery now, but I, it doesn't show sort of like the placement of this in relation to the other houses compared to what they're accustomed, you know, what was there before, that's all.
Okay. All right, very good. Then, uh, there's nothing more. We'll, um, we'll close the applicant's, um, presentation here and we'll move on to, uh, the public comment portion. Ms. Harrigan?
So we have, uh, Linda Kwong going first, followed by, uh, Tommy Leonelli.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, to all the commissioners. And I will keep it brief. I want to talk about two things. First and foremost, as a lifelong resident of Southport, um, I, I now live at ninety-seven Arbor Terrace in Southport. We raised our family here. We are still here and I grew up at three two nine Bronson Roads. So lifelong Southport resident. The reason I mention that is I have seen the changes in the town of Fairfield, in Fairfield Center. And it has been, um, I understand the economy. I'm a business person. Um, and there are small businesses, but there are, I don't know of any family businesses. I think Mercurials was the last one to leave. So I would ask the commission to consider, um, Greenfield Animal Hospital as a family business and how important that is and what type of level of service, um, that can bring. Oh, secondly, I am certainly not an expert on zoning, but as a child, I spent a lot of time in either of two places, Southport Village, which has, uh, is a village, but there are homes right there next to the little sandwich shop. And I also spent a lot of time in Greenfield Hill shopping area. I don't want to date myself, but there was a pharmacy that had a soda fountain. So that's all I'll say about that. Um, but a very safe and nice place to go. So I've always considered a neighborhood. I have considered it, um, a really hometown feel. Um, and I also want to address the fact that I, I am and have been for thirty years, um, taking our pets to, uh, Dr. Marsh and to Dr. Marsh, the first Dr. Marsh. And the care and compassion is amazing. And I will only just share briefly one story, and that is of the fact that we had to put our sixteen year old cat down uh, earlier this summer and, uh, Dr. Marsh, Dr. Andrew Marsh, um, uh, went through that with me and was compassionate and he sent a card to our house and it wasn't just a, you know, sorry for your loss, thanks for your business. It was a personalized handwritten note. I do believe that Greenfield Animal Hospital is a neighborhood treasure. And I would ask the commission to think of it in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Who's next?
So next we have, uh, Tommy Leonelli, followed by, um, Megan Teed.
Excellent.
All right, uh, thank you, everybody. Again, Mr. Chairman and everyone on the, the WebEx. I know it's late. Um, so thank you for your service to the community and I'll just keep this brief. Um, my name is Tommy Leonelli. I was raised in Fairfield and I currently live two doors up from the animal hospital. Um, and I'm actually feel very lucky, actually, that I have my dog Peach as a patient of the animal hospital. So I am in, um, in full support of their building of the new facility. And I want to highlight a, a couple of reasons, um, that I feel that way. So first, um, currently I do feel the, the the new facility will bring, um, life to like a, an overlooked and forgotten part of the plaza. So the current church, uh, you know, definitely dated and equated, it's been empty for a long time. Um, and I definitely trust, um, not only the, the uh, renderings that I've seen, but, um, the, the collaboration with the, uh, Greenfield Hill Improvement, Improvement Society. So, uh, I'm sort of confident in the, uh, their ability to deliver and, and maintain and potentially improve on the overall charm of the neighborhood. Um, I know Andrew, uh, Dr. Marsh had mentioned it, the current parking situation and the Tetris that goes on is you know, unsafe. And so I see it as a net positive to, to move the location um, to a safer area where, where parking isn't so, um, intense. And then, um, echoing the sentiments of, uh, forgive me, I, I missed the, the name of the, the person that just spoke, but I truly see the animal hospital as a long time, um, pretty much a core of not only the town, but Greenfield Hill. And, yeah, I mean, the, the fact that it's a family business, it's been in our com- community for over forty years. Um, I'd love to continue to honor the Marsh family service to us, um, and help them expand and, uh, to, to be, you know, not only cutting edge technology wise, but some of the aspects they mentioned of, um, you know, better care, you know, safer, you know, patient and animal experiences, more compassionate experiences. So, uh, again, thank you and, um, uh, that's all I have to say. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Next, we have, uh, Megan Teed, followed by Heather and Keith. Durkin?
Thanks. Ms. Teed?
Hi, thank you for your time. Um, I'm a lifelong Fairfield resident. I currently live in Greenfield Hill with my husband and my two kids and my dog. I'm also a member, I'm also a client of the animal hospital. I love Dr. Andrew Marsh. I love his family. Um, I a hundred percent support this new proposed building. I think they would very much benefit for the parking situation. Just the general care that they can provide. They're such loving, um, doctors and the staff, um, a hundred percent in support. You know, unfortunately, with the recent closure of Testo's Market, the abandoned Chase Building, um, you know, I would like to see some more life in that part of town, you know, it, it's, it, it was one of the critical parts of moving to this area of Fairfield, um, to be able to have the access and the, you know, the vicinity of these, you know, um, these establishments. So I think, you know, this, I'm a hundred percent support. Um, thank you for your consideration. I hope that you can push this along.
Thanks very much.
So next we have Heather and Kevin, um, Durkin, followed by, um, Gary Peterson.
Thank you. The Durkins?
Hi, how are, how's everybody tonight?
Good day.
Had to step away. I'm so sorry. Um, I just wanted to also let you guys know about my support for the animal hospital. Um, I have lived in Fairfield for more than three quarters of my life. I live in the Mill River area. I have two dogs and a cat currently. Um, I've had multiple animals through the animal hospital with, um, the, or Dr. Marsh Senior, as well as with Andrew Marsh. Um, the vet is a community, um, company in my mind. It's not a- anything other than an addition to the neighborhood. Um, if you look on an aerial map, you'll see that there are veterinarian offices in neighborhoods. And I do believe that is for a very, um, core reason as when you go somewhere with your animal, especially with a dog, you have to get out of the car, usually have to, um, walk around with them, make them feel comfortable. I mean, there's many reasons why a veterinarian office should be in an area with property, with, um, safe parking, with some property where you can actually walk your animal on. The current location right now, um, has limited area to get out of the car and feel safe, especially with COVID where you aren't able to necessarily get into the building. Um, traffic has been insane all over Fairfield, so the, and in that area as well. So moving a couple of doors down, I strongly support so that you can easily pull into a parking lot and safely get out of your vehicle with your animal and be able to have the opportunity to walk around on the ground. I'd also like to say that my husband and I, um, frequently, um, visit multiple locations in the Greenfield Hill area. We go to Bonda very often. We go to Greenfield, um, Greenfield, um, the place where we have our animals groomed. I'm sorry, it's late and I've had a long day of meetings. And also obviously the veterinarian clinic. We were very upset to see the Chase Bank closed, cause that's where we would frequently go to do our banking needs. Um, we do not want more things to leave that area. Testo's left. Um, obviously the gas station slash, um, autom- automotive building is empty as well. I know somebody already mentioned, um, there are a couple of other buildings in the area that are vacant. We
Yeah, the repair shop is back up and running now.
It is. Okay, great. I haven't even noticed that. I noticed that they fixed it up. So we do want that access, um, to be able to go to some very vital needs to keep our, um, family happy, healthy and, um, enjoying life. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I think you said, uh, Mr. Peterson is next?
We have Gary Peterson, followed by Jody Peterson.
Okay, great.
Hi, so I'm Gary Peterson. We live next door at fourteen Hillside Road. And we feel we'd be significantly and negatively impacted by the proposal in its current form. Um, I've tried to summarize all the points that have been brought forward to me, um, this evening. It's a shame that, you know, we can't walk the property. Someone mentioned the Google map, but to really see it out there, um, even if you're familiar with Forty Hillside, uh, when we walked the property, we were very surprised at the potential impact it would have on the neighboring properties, um.
Well, we, we can, and, and, and most of us do, uh, just so that you know, um, yeah.
Right. Um, also for those who are not familiar with this, uh, if you want to comment, I'd encourage you to do so by uh, checking the chat button in the lower right and just signing up. The, uh,
That is not part of the public record, just so you know. If you want to, if you want to be heard, please sign up to get on the list and I'll make another announcement, but
Right, okay. I didn't think everyone was aware of that. Um, and, uh, I, I must also comment that, um, you know, Attorney Fallon and others have supported this. Uh, many people in the immediate neighborhood just found out about it last night or today, uh, which is unfortunate, or we would have a lot more, uh, people commenting on this. So basically, we would significantly prefer the property be, to be a single family residence, similar to the neighboring properties. But if the zoning board feels differently than a significantly downsized vet with larger setbacks and a few other stipulations on all sides would be a much less, um, uh, preferred option for the following reasons. First, under section three point one of the town plan and con- conservation development, it says, Greenfield Hill Business District is a neighborhood design business district which promotes uses appropriated area, which is fine, provides safeguards from overexpansion and limits business commercial uses to those of a neighborhood scale. This is much broader than a neighborhood scale. It's a state of the art, large facility. Only uses of this nature should be encouraged in this business center so that the business complements the residential area, which we don't think it does. It goes on and says zoning regulation amendments, which would increase permitted density of development should be discouraged in order to preserve the character of the area. So we believe that a seven thousand square foot building with a, only a seventeen foot, point five foot setback versus the previous church, and someone had asked before what the setbacks were. The previous church was only twenty-two hundred square feet with an eighty-nine foot setback, to answer that question. Plus the twenty-eight parking spaces doesn't provide, quote, safeguards from overexpansion. It does not, quote, complement the residential area and does not discourage, quote, increased permitted density of development in order to preserve the character of the area. It's about three thousand square feet larger than the combined liquor store and dry cleaning building across the street. Uh, the vast majority of the property would be covered with a building in asphalt, leaving little lawn area. leaving little lawn area and jutting out into Hillside Road versus the two immediate neighbors with much larger frontage. Our frontage, even with the porch, where I don't think is considered frontage, but in any case, we have a seventy-four foot setback. The other neighbor probably has a similar one. And this uh proposal is basically as if you were to walk six steps from the curb. That's about seventeen and a half feet. So it really juts out.
I don't know. How do I tell who's going to speak?
Hello? I'm sorry if you're um not speaking. If you could please mute your line so that the folks who do have the mic uh can have our undivided attention. If you'd like to speak, you can sign your name up in the chat box. Or, once we get through all of those who have signed up, I will make another announcement, an open call, and you can raise your hand or or chime in at that point. But right now, Mr. Peterson, you have the mic.
Thanks. Um, this is nothing against the Marshes. I don't know them, but I understand that they're wonderful people. Um, and but they successfully served the neighborhood with a much smaller footprint and other vets in the Fairfield Commercial District don't even require this much space, and they're in a commercial district. So having a large, full-service destination vet serving the wider geographic area than just simply Greenfield Hill is inconsistent with the neighborhood. The next point is section twelve point five of zoning regulations defines the purpose of the Neighborhood Design Business District. Um, "Provide local services in a manner which will not be detrimental to the surrounding residential areas, which we think this is in its current form." Um, although they vet hospitals are allowed uh without uh boarding in this district, uh, I do question whether another section of the code applies, section twelve point five point three, as Attorney Fallon referenced. "Business and professional services which primarily provide services to customers and client on the premises provide that no individual tenant shall have an interior floor area exceeding four thousand square feet." Well, one definition of tenant is an occupant or inhabitant of any place. And uh regardless of the definition, the maximum square footage where stipulated for virtually every other business in the neighborhood is four thousand square feet and that benchmark is well-established for multiple different uh uh out um businesses in the district. So we would like you to consider that as well as a precedent. And since the proposed building is seven thousand square feet, we believe it doesn't conform these with with these regulations will be detrimental to the surrounding area in violation of the intended purpose of the of the zoning regulations. The next thing is about the setback, which Attorney Fallon also referenced, and I think there's some confusion in the language. Section twelve point seven point six point four states the setback shall be ten feet or the same as that of the adjacent resident district setback requirement, whichever is greater. The statute doesn't specify that the term adjacent only applies to the front setback. Rather, there are four single-family property lines and residents that are in closer proximity to Forty Hillside Road than the existing commercial buildings are, which the applicant is using as the definition of adjacent. And with only a seventeen point five foot setback, not allowing for greater frontage residential setback is potentially non-conforming. We ask that you consider that. Um, regarding the spot zoning, um, uh, whether it's legal or in principle, uh, when you're neighboring four properties, actually touching four neighboring properties with single-family homes and not touching the commercial district because the the street divides it, whether legal or in principle, it seems to be very close, if not spot zoning. Several people have commented on the building architecture looking like a strip mall, not which is not in keeping with the neighboring single-family homes. I do agree with the the comment about the stark white being, you know, should be changed. Um, while the side setback to our property on fourteen Hillside Road is twenty-six feet, if you look closely, several structures are on our side of the building within a few feet of the property. So the generator, other mechanicals, what they call the pee and poop gravel dog walk and the dumpster are all closer than twenty-six feet. They come in closer, but for some reason, those are not considered setbacks, which I think is uh pretty, pretty ridiculous. Clearly, no one would want the poop and pee gravel dog walk right next to your property line. We have had drainage problems in the past, being at the base of Greenfield Hill. I have to trust the town planning department has adequately reviewed the plans, but the town did approve drainage plans for homes on Hill Farm Road. And several times a year, rivers run through the backyards down the hill from these properties on North Cedar Road. Um, I'd like to have assurances that this wouldn't happen if this is approved on Forty Hillside Road and learn where the water, learn more about where the water exits the property. And the percent of property that would be impervious, someone had mentioned the sixteen percent number. I don't know where that comes from. If you look at the plan, um, the vast majority is covered by asphalt and the building. Uh, I'm almost done, but uh many large, a hundred-foot tall trees would have to be cut down between our properties. Uh, pictures of those were sent in to the TPZ today. The teas, the trees provide sufficient screening for the church that was previously there. Um, and we did get agreement from the project manager that the stockade fence, similar to the existing one, would extend the entire property line along with green giant trees closely spaced to greet screen our view. And the Y trees would be trimmed but not removed. Um, but since the ground elevation of Forty Hillside is much higher than fourteen, a six-foot fence doesn't even block the view of the building foundation. In some locations from our porch and our our family room, we could still see the foundation over a six-foot fence. So much taller trees would have to be planted to block the view. And the tree heights are not specified, but they'd be ha- you know, I'm nervous that they're just going to plant small things four feet apart and that would not suffice. Um, Larry Foley did a very good job around the generator up the road when he uh screened that. Uh, and finally, a comment about the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society. I really take issue with uh Attorney Fallon's comment that they are vigilant. They supported the application. We were told last night that there were only a handful of people in that meeting uh and they never uh contacted any of the neighbors. They made that unilaterally on their own. There's a commercial property manager in that committee uh that is quite pro-commercial. So I would take that with less than a grain of salt because they're not uh adhering to their goals of maintaining the beautiful rural character of Greenfield Hill um and representing the community. Uh, they just represent um themselves in this case. Um, in conclusion, we don't think this is the place for a seven thousand square foot state-of-the-art destination of vet. Um, if this is approved as is, then all residents around the district are potentially jeopardized and could be changed by setting this precedent. So if we can have a single-family residence there, a significantly downsized, uh, I guess you can't two-two do two-story, but a significantly downsized vet with the following changes is recommended. Larger setbacks on all sides with reduced parking, more residential-like architecture, sufficient screening to block all views of the building from all angles, and assurance that drainage on to other properties will not be impacted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Appreciate your comments.
All right.
Uh, next we have Jody Peterson followed by uh Fran Blair.
Hi, um, I'm Jody Peterson and it might give you a little idea of how my husband and I communicate because I thought we were really talking about separate things. And so I, and there's a lot of repetition, so I will try not to be repetitive. Um, but anyway, our, my address, as Gary's, is fourteen Hillside Road, which is on the corner of Hillside and North Cedar. Um, and our home shares the property line with Forty Hillside Road. Uh, my hus- I'm just going to give you a little bit of history and bear with me because to us, it's very important. Um, this is, you know, personal in many ways, but it also does affect the entirety of Greenfield Hill. Um, my husband Gary and I have lived at this address for thirty-seven years and having purchased our home in nineteen eighty-four. We chose this house because we not only love the architecture of the historical farmhouse, but also the quaint feeling of the little town of Greenfield Hill. Before buying, we were concerned about the busy location, but found that the backyard was remarkably quiet and protected from noise and activity. Over time, we renovated and added to our home on four different occasions while always paying special attention to the gardens, planting and privacy of our backyard. We had an excellent relationship, actually, with our neighbors at the Jehovah's Witness Church. We were able to communicate openly and cordially over any issues involving our shared lots, particularly tree work and pruning. Since their land is a much higher elevation than ours, the church board even wholeheartedly agreed to allowing an eight-foot fence erected on a section of our property so that we did not oversee their parking lot from inside our house or our outside patio. I understand that fences cannot be designated to be more than six feet high by town zoning, but we were informed, as long as it is mutually agreed upon by the neighbors involved, it's okay to do so. So we were extremely appreciative that the church was so accommodating in helping us maintain the tranquility of our backyard and it has, which has always been a top priority for us. So we, of course, as Gary said, prefer a single-family dwelling to be built on the lot next door, keep it residential and not have the zoning change to commercial use. We did not understand, actually, the unusual order of buying the property, demolishing the church and then applying for a zoning change. Seems a little um presumptuous. Um, however, Gary and I are conscientious and reasonable property owners and we were not totally opposed to the idea of Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital moving down the hill when we first heard about the possibility. We do not like it, but we were not totally opposed. Uh, we've had good back and forth communication with the new owners and their property manager via email over the past few months. Um, currently, the Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital has two veterinarians, as you know. We were told that they want to hire a third um and include other services. I'm surprised how many I heard uh this evening. Um, but that is why they say they need the extra space. Uh, we were very curious to view and understand the actual site plans, however, and finally were able to do so after initiating our own visits to TPZ at Town Hall and the surveyor's office. We then requested to meet with them on the lot and the property manager did so on Monday, October eleventh. We were frankly shocked while walking the property when we realized how much larger the new building was going to be compared to the original footprint of the church. Our entire side and backyard will be dramatically affected by the new structure and increased traffic. With a setback of only twenty-six feet, the walls of the new building are literally right outside our side windows to our home. And all the mechanicals, including the generator, air conditioning, uh, condenser, the P area, as we mentioned, um, are, you know, jutting out from that, leaving literally just a few feet to our property line. Uh, due to the land being a higher elevation, uh, I'm sorry, elevation and the asphalt of the parking lot being expanded closer to our yard, they need to build a retaining wall, we were told. And their dumpster is being placed on our side of the parking lot along with all the other um undesirable things to get. Um, and within, and the dumpster will be within few uh full view of our yard as well. I don't understand, for instance, why the dumpster couldn't be placed in the far back left corner of their parking lot, uh, not visible to any of the surrounding homes. Perhaps a little bit longer of a walk for the staff, but it makes a lot of sense visually. Uh, we requested that they show on the landscaping plan the existing use that have lined our yard since the nineteen fifties when the owners of our own farmhouse divided and sold off their farmland. And after we came to understand how many trees will be taken out, we inquired about also showing on the plan um a dark green painted stockade fence, but as Gary said, six feet probably won't even melt, and green giant evergreens planted along the entire shared property line. We want the green giants to be planted with the trees actually touching one another as they did around the generator on Hillside Road, um, not a four-foot distance as previously discussed, so that an immediate full hedge is planted with no space in between. Given the unknown about how this will actually look, though, upon physical construction, the property, property and manager agreed to our request of including all three of these protective elements on the plan so that we may judge which to add um and/or keep uh to best preserve our quiet backyard after the building, the all the mechanicals, the P area, the retaining wall, the parking lot and the dumpster are in place. To facilitate this plan, more importantly, actually, to others, uh, other residents surrounding us and in uh Greenfield Hill, almost every tree along the side of our house and up to Hillside Road will have to be removed to allow for the building of one this size. Um, I did attach photos in a letter that I sent to you all today, um, but I think it bounced back. Um, but um, on the, um, anyway, they were ill- illustrating how the elimination, elimination of all those old trees destroy, totally destroys the rural feel and character of Greenfield Hill from the street. Um, I, you know, I, this does not work, I know, but this, uh, these are photographs I took and this entire section of trees will be gone. Um, and uh this as well, all these trees are on the side of the property. There's no way they can, the the building itself will be where these trees are. Um, and this is from the back of the lot looking towards the street. Again, all these trees will be removed. Um, so after fully comprehending the enormous impact of this project's size and undesirable appearance, when all the trees are removed, we feel strongly that the setbacks on the road be increased and the setback should be considerably more than twenty-six feet along our property line. This will also reduce the size of the building and negate the necessity of expanding an already large parking lot. Um, again, I I picked up on uh Mr. Fallon using the word vigilant uh for the Greenfield Hill Improvement Society. Um, only after several unanswered emails, texts and phone calls to the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society about this manner, matter, did one member finally agree when Gary reached out several times, and she's a neighbor, to come to our home last evening. And she told us that the uh, the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society backs the plan. We certainly do not feel represented by this um organization um as we did many years ago. We were never even approached by them and we live next door to the property in question. Um, actually, last night when we met at our house, um, somebody did ask if, you know, how she felt about the property being seven thousand feet. And she said that actually, they didn't realize the square footage when they approved it, that they were only concerned about the hours and um overnight. So uh, anyway, Gary and I find the unknown of what will come in the years ahead, once the zoning is changed from residential to commercial, very concerning. We just do not understand the necessity of so much additional space and parking space for veterinary practice that according to the Neighborhood Design Business District resol- uh, regulations should preserve the character of the area and not overbuild resulting in added density. Um, again, I have to emphasize all these trees being taken down. But again, we are not totally opposed to the Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital being next door as long as there are significant changes um made to the size, the setbacks, the privacy screening, the style of the building and that we can guarantee no drainage issues. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Next, we have Fran Blair followed by um Berkowitz?
Yeah, hi, um, Fran Blair here.
Yeah, hi, Fran Blair here, along with my wife Sarah, longtime resident on North Cedar Road. Just keeping things brief here, you know, there's a lot to like about this. You know, local business is great, family-owned business is great. You know, having the vet in the area is great. So there's a lot to like about this, but you know, however, we tend to agree with the points that Gary and that the Petersons have made. And I won't go through them all, but I think, you know, the gist of it is that the the building on the size of the property just seems to be a kind of a mismatch with respect to the neighborhood. You know, the Greenfield Hill Village, you know, Association, they didn't reach out to us and they certainly don't speak for us, so we would echo those comments as well. You know, I'm no expert in zoning and things like this, but it just strikes me as a bad precedent where, you know, we're eliminating residential property. It's, you know, if we're doing this for, in this situation, like, why not, you know, for, you know, the next situation, which might be, you know, next door to your house? So, you know, our preference would be, you know, to keep as, keep the property as residential, zoned for residential, and if not, if there's a way to scale back the, you know, the scope of the project because it real, with, you know, the setbacks being what it's proposed, it's just, it's just way too big for the, for the character of the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Berkowitz, followed by Margot Turk.
One, this is Annie Berkowitz. My husband Moses is here with me and we live at 58 North Cedar, the first house on North Cedar. And just wanted to briefly voice our concerns about the, mainly the size of the proposed building being completely inconsistent with the look and feel and charm of Greenfield Hill, the neighborhood. And the setback is a major concern as well. Also, just want to echo the concerns about the Greenfield Hill Improvement Society not being representative of anyone that we know on North Cedar, as well as how we're under the impression that they weren't even aware of the detail of the plans, what the building would look like, the size of the building, the size of the parking lot, before they, you know, made their approval. So all of these concerns are important to us and, you know, we're directly adjacent to the back of this proposed building. So, yeah, we appreciate you listening to our concerns.
Great. Thank you very much.
Margot Turk, followed by Letty Patino.
Hi, this is Margot Turk. I also was raised here in Greenfield Hill. Currently live at 25 Wayside Court for the past 22 years with my husband and our teenage daughter. And I agree with those who have spoken in opposition of changing the property zoning to commercial. The property should remain as residentially zoned for a single-family house. Attorney Fallon mentioned that there's much unused commercial property available in the neighborhood already. And I certainly find it very presumptuous, as did Jody Peterson, that the new owners purchased the property and demolished the building without having any approved plans or accommodations or amendments made to the property. He also said that they had the endorsement of the Greenfield Village Improvement Society and as everyone preceding me mentioned, I do not feel that the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society had the intentions of the neighborhood in mind as they did not speak to anyone in the neighborhood. I feel like the 7,000-square-foot building with a reduced setback and the removal of all of those trees certainly does not harmonize with the neighborhood feel. And inserting a commercial business in between those residential houses seems impractical. I'm not an immediate neighbor of the property in question, but I think all of those who spoke before me, including those who were in agreement of the changes, would not want a 7,000-square-foot commercial business that looks like a strip mall next door to them inserted in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Letty Patino, followed by Peggy Harwood.
And just so we're aware, it's about 10 minutes to 10. And we will be adjourning at 10. It does appear as though we have more than a few more people signed up in the chat here to speak, which means that we will hold the public comment portion of this open until our next meeting, when we will resume. I would just like to note that anyone who submitted a letter, that's part of the public record, that is read by every one of us and considered very carefully. So you do not need to feel as though if you submitted a letter, you also need to speak. And certainly, if you submitted a letter, your letter does not need to be read into the record. So just wanted to get that out there. So with that, let's, we'll try and get one or two more people in here. So Ms. Harrigan, who was, who was up next?
Letty Patino.
Letty Patino. Oh, you're on mute. Sorry.
Hi, sorry about that. It's super late. I'm sorry. I'll be brief, but thank you for all this thing. I am a resident of Greenfield Hill and a longtime customer of Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital and also on the board of the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society. And I just wanted to clear up one thing. We, Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society did have all of the plans. Dr. Marsh has kept us informed throughout everything.
What is your position with the Village Improvement Organization?
I'm just, I'm a board member.
A board member. Okay, great. Can you, also, if you, if you weren't already in your comments, could you just take a moment to talk about your process? How you received the information, what process you underwent, when to evaluate it? How you outreach to the neighbors, the number of neighbors that you spoke to, and how you arrived at the endorsement that you submitted in the letter?
So we met as a board, or we had virtual meetings as a board. Dr. Marsh had reached out to us with the plans and kept us kind of informed as he went along and showed us what the building was gonna look like, gave us all of the details. I'm sure everything that was submitted to you all as well. And we met as a board several times and felt that it, we felt that looking at the building, it did look in keeping with the neighborhood. And we felt that it was a family-run business that had been there since, you know, 1982. And that I, as a patient, my, my dogs go to Dr. Marsh's. As a patient, he's just, he's an incredible vet and I feel lucky that we have him in this community and I wouldn't want to see him have to go elsewhere. So I like that this would keep him there. I think that they're very open in discussing, hopefully you felt that way too, with what the building was gonna look like, taking input. And so that was kind of some of the process that we went through.
Did, did, did the association outreach to any neighbors or was it strictly a decision that was rendered by the board?
It was rendered by the board.
All right. Very good. That's very helpful. I appreciate that. I appreciate that information about the, about the endorsement letter.
And then can I, can I just say a couple more quick things as, as a patient, Dr. Marsh's? He's always gone above and beyond in terms of being a, being an incredible vet and as I said, I just wouldn't want to see his practice have to leave this area. I know that the parking, everything that we've discussed already, but the parking, the size of the building, there's other people who would like to go and have their animals taken there and they can't do that with the building as it stands now. So I just think the option to keep him in our neighborhood and to keep that care for our pets is something that is valuable and I hope it, it can happen for him.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we still have five minutes left. Who's next on the list?
We have Peggy Harwood, followed by Dabney Bowen.
Okay, great.
Yeah, hi, I'm Peggy Harwood and I live around the corner on North Cedar Road and have lived here for, you know, 25-plus years. Certainly supportive of all the local businesses up in Greenfield Hill neighborhood and supportive of any of them that are trying to expand. The two concerns I have tonight is one on your decision to change the zoning. You know, is support, would be supportive of an owner-occupied building, you know, veterinary use, but when you see a building 7,000 square feet, you start thinking, well, if they don't, as mentioned earlier, if they don't fill, don't need the whole building, then it gets potentially sublet out to some other use and would not want to be in a position where we've kind of lost the control of what that property is used for. So that would be the first thing. And then the second, just reiterate the concern of just the overall size and setback and, and looking at the plans, it really just did not feel to me like it was totally in keeping the scope of the building with what else is in the surrounding area. So.
Sure.
Hope you consider all that.
Great. Thanks very much. Why don't we try and get one more in here? Dabney Bowen?
Hi, my name is Dabney Bowen. I live 12 houses up the street on the corner of Vernon Hill and Hillside Road. I've lived there for 15 years with my husband and our family. And I just have a few comments directed at the commissioners as they consider this application and in their consideration, I will be brief. To my family, this application, not an expansion of the Neighborhood Design Business District as much as it is relocation of a very successful locally-owned and family-owned small business that has been serving the Greenfield Hill community for over 40 years. This, it's not, I don't think that this is about them wanting to change zoning as much as it is a need to continue to serve this community and cannot retrofit their business into any of the existing vacancies. Speaking of vacancies, vacancies beget vacancies and considering the recent vacancy of Testo's and the other two vacancies that Chase Bank and the real estate office left behind, I would encourage this commission to consider that successful businesses will bring in other successful businesses. And I think we all want the village to thrive and so that is a consideration. Also, I participated in the Plan of Conservation and Design and I'll say that the spirit and intent of the POCD in Greenfield Hill was to preserve the village bucolic essence of the neighborhood. That certainly doesn't preclude supporting and retaining neighborhood businesses. The, and I will also say that I believe that the low-density, low-FAR, extremely low-FAR single-story farmhouse barn-style of the architecture is very much in keeping with the Neighborhood Design District and allows for better parking options that are a whole hell of a lot safer than what Dr. Marsh is having to deal with in his current location. We would hate to see him leave the neighborhood, which I fear he would have to do if he cannot accommodate a real estate solution for his growing business in our neighborhood. The business is called the Greenfield Animal Hospital and it's named that because of our community. I'd also just like to point out one thing. When we're talking about density and large commercial structures, let's not forget that Larry Foley has two very large commercial office buildings right across the street. So when you're comparing this 7,000-square-foot structure to other businesses in the village, you might want to think about that and when you, those are, I'm just gonna guess, probably 50,000 square feet, 20, 20, 20, 25 each. So that's something to consider as well. So that's all I have to say and thank you for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you very much for your comments and thank, thanks everyone for their comments. We do have many, frankly, more people who are signed up and I would anticipate that there are a few on the, on the line here who haven't signed up that also want to chat. We're at our curfew, Attorney Fallon. So we will adjourn the, the public hearing on this item. It'll be open until our next regular meeting. Mr. Went, is that right? We would roll this over into November 9th?
That is correct.
Okay. So for all the members of the public, next regular scheduled meeting is November 9th. We will take this up again, continue public comment. When public comment concludes, the applicant will have a rebuttal. When the applicant is finished with their rebuttal, then we will close the public hearing on this item. I will also reiterate that if you would like to submit a letter, please email it into the commission and it will be part of the public file. We will read everything, will consider everything. And if you do that, you do not need to feel compelled to attend the hearing and also speak. Okay? So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. All right? Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.